Okay, we got the go-ahead that we'll get council meetings started tonight. Thanks everybody for coming. We've got some young people in the audience tonight. That's good. You know, there's usually some treats for young people that sit through council meetings, so that's a pretty good deal.
Do they have to stay all night?
Not all night, just long enough to get a piece of candy.
Kathleen, you're in.
Yeah, yeah. You put on a good show like that with the Chamber and you get candy too. Good job. Thank you all for joining us online and TV and in-person. We'll get our meeting started off like we always do with a prayer motivational thought and the pledge. Councilman Marshall has got the spiritual thought.
I have the prayer. I'm gonna do a prayer. I would've asked Jordan Hales to do it.
Perfect.
He said yes.
Mr. Jordan Hales and then followed up Councilman Argyle will lead us in the pledge.
I've got the pledge.
Oh, Councilman Euler.
Father in heaven, we're grateful for this day. We're grateful for the opportunity to gather together to discuss the needs of this wonderful community. And we're grateful, Father, for this not cause damage and heartache. And Father, we're grateful for our public safety and mindful of them and the incidents that we've had over the past couple of weeks. And we're grateful for the members of the community that are so protective of our children. We acknowledge them and we pray for them. And we pray that they can know that we support the community with open hearts and open minds. We pray for the staff of the city and the elected officials that they may make wise decisions, not only for today's residents, but for those that occupy this area in the decades to come. In this, Father, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That takes us to item number four on our agenda, public comments section. Anybody from the public that would like to address the mayor and council or any items that maybe aren't on the agenda coming up, but any general public comments for anybody that would like to make those. None of the kids? That's the quickest way to get candy. All right. No takers. All right. With that, we'll move on to council comments. We'll start with Councilman Carden.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. First, last week, we were able to attend our power conference. Learned a lot of things about diversifying our power, a lot of different things that are going on with our power company, and I'm sure that some of the other council members will probably talk about that. Second, I sent some pictures to Nick. Last, or I guess it was two weeks ago, there was the Arts Council, the youth theater, did the Jungle Book. That's a terrible picture that I took, but the show was awesome. If you haven't went to one of the Arts Councils or the youth theaters productions, Karma and our team do an awesome job. Lots of kids, lots of people involved, lots of things going on there. So it was really cool to see. And so shout out to them for always having something going on. The Arts Council has a lot of things happening all the time. Earlier that day, we got to participate in the, what do we call it, the book chain, the human book chain across Maine, which was a really fun event. And my kids especially loved that they got to check out the library first. They weren't really excited at that point, at least some of them weren't. But they were excited to see all the books moving and be able to take part in that. And it was a really cool event. If you weren't there, there's lots of videos online. And I think we moved a whole section of books, like a complete section of the basement, because the numbers were overwhelming. I think there was over 400 people there to help with the books. And there's a little video that Travis spent a long time there. KSL was there, a lot of people. Really just making sure that we take care of our library, take pride in what we're doing. So thank you for everyone who showed up for that. And thank you to Scott and his team for putting that together. We made the video. And I was doing some heavy lifting there, if you can't tell Shane.
Look overwhelmed.
Overwhelmed, because I had the phone too. Thank you again to everyone who made that possible. Along with that, so Saturday this last week, we had the Easter egg hunt, and I'll let Kathleen talk to that a little bit more in a second. But what an awesome event to have an Easter egg hunt every year. Even though it was a week early, we still had close to 2,000 kids there. Lots of businesses coming together to make it happen. The best part of the day is that we got Councilman Marshall to wear rabbit ears, very willingly. Bunny ears. Well, yeah, you're right. There you go. We had a great event. And the one thing that I really loved about that event, and then I'll invite Kathleen to come up here, is the adaptive field that is there. For those that don't know, Compassion Ability a business here in our community has a field that they offer for those who have special needs, whether that is a disability, autism, whatever it may be, so that they can help participate. Because sometimes they are a forgotten group in our community. You know, we during Christmas time do the Silent Santa for a similar reason. And so I want to thank them. And then with that, I'm gonna invite Kathleen to come up here to talk a little bit more about what's going on with the Chamber of Commerce.
Jesse, well, that picture is up. I'm just wondering where Councilman Marshall's ears are, those bunny ears that he said he was wearing?
I think he gave them to a little kid that really wanted them.
Someone went, oh, my gosh, can I please have those? I'm like, sure.
Yeah, a little kid that really wanted them.
Thank you, Councilman Euler.
Picture, I'm sure, right?
See?
One picture.
They look Photoshop photos.
I have more. I have more pictures. Should we start with the video, Nick? Did you decide which?
Sure.
I have a little. So SFCN released a video. It's on YouTube, but this is just a little clip of it.
Their ability. And so that was really special to see. And you could see that the parents really appreciated having an opportunity for their child. But it was great to see all parents were so excited for this opportunity for their kids.
Yeah, the parents really were happy to see that their kids have a good role model to look up to, especially like Lindsay being here. They just wanted their kids to be close to us and see that they could grow up and make a difference in their communities.
I think that this is the pinnacle of what Spanish Fork is. It is everybody coming together for the greater good, everybody participating. It's not like it's just the Chamber, or it's just the city, or it's just, you know, a private entity. It's everyone together. It's volunteer groups. It's, I mean, really, it's a group effort. Everybody contributes, and we all have a great time. So I think that's what makes it so iconic, is it's ours. It's about the kids. It's about bringing joy. It's about bringing spring celebration. And there is nothing comparable to seeing a kid receive a free bike, you know, like or open their egg and get a golden ticket and just explode with joy. And so that really does make this such a rewarding experience.
Thanks, Nick. So as you guys can see, check out the whole video on YouTube. It really is fun. They had some drones. So when the siren went off, like you could just see, like all the fields just going nuts. It was cool. I didn't even know there were drones there, because there were so many people. I wasn't paying attention. So that was some really cool footage. So definitely check out the video on YouTube. It's shared on our social media as well. And then, so that, I have some more pictures of the Easter egg hunt. It was a smashing success. I have not received a single piece of negative feedback. And I mean, we poured everything that we had into it. So like, we tried really hard to cover all of our bases, but I was still, you know, sure that there was something that we missed. But I haven't received a single negative word about it. The community has just poured love into us and gratitude for doing it. They posted, they sent pictures of their kids. They're sending thank you notes to the businesses. And so it's just kind of really beautiful to see everybody receiving this event in this way. So I'm super proud. I'm grateful that it's done for this year. It really was a big ordeal, but it was so worth it. Like just being there that day was kind of surreal to just see it all come to life. We did a couple of new things this year. We did have a bling booth. And so Rasmus and Jewelers, you know, sponsored it. I was able to get Miss Utah and Miss Spanish Fork to come down. And then we got a bunch of different crowns for little kids and adults alike to take their photos with them. And I didn't know how that was going to go over because it was new, but it was really well received. Everybody had a super good time and it was fun to kind of have a area for staged pictures. So we're already thinking about different things that we can do for next year to kind of have more activities at the park, since everyone liked that so much. But, so yeah, it's an evolving process, like you said, Jesse, the other day. Every year, we try to just, you know, keep what we did really well and then, you know, make it better. So that's where we're at right now. So thank you, guys, for coming down. You didn't get to wear any ears, but we can always, you know.
We can always.
We can always.
It was amazing event. The sound, when the siren goes off and the, I was watching nine and 10-year-olds, and I'm like, oh, my goodness. Less than a minute.
It's unbelievable. I tried to promote that. And I told everyone, it starts at nine, it's over at 9:01. And I don't think people understand that that is exactly how it goes. I mean, 13,000 eggs we put out, and that is still how it goes. They're just fast.
The All Abilities one was, that was awesome. That picture you showed with the little sister and her brother, my daughter and I are watching this, and you're just like, oh, it's tough to watch. I mean, you're just like, this is so cool. She's just guiding him around. And everyone is just super supportive. It was awesome.
I'm gonna be honest, when I saw, when I watched the footage of the All Abilities, I choked up, you know, because it is, to put it on and to conceptualize it, you know, is one thing. But then to actually see it in action, and on the day of, I didn't get to, you know, really see it happen. So then getting to see it through here, I was like, wow, this really is a big deal. You know, this really does make a difference. So that was really cool.
The smiles, it was a fun time. Good job. Good job to everyone. And thank you so much for all, everybody.
All the sponsors to give away all the baskets and bikes and everything. It's just such a team effort.
It's beautiful. It's beautiful. And that's what I've been really, you know, just working to kind of like spread that. It's, we couldn't do it. It's not the Chamber that, you know, we organize it, but it's really everybody to contribute that makes this a possibility. And that's what's so cool about this event. So another piece of really exciting news, our magazine came out, which I hope you all have your copy and you framed it, you know what I mean? This was another thing that, having this and the Easter egg at the same time, like those are so, those are a lot of big projects going on simultaneously. So to have them both done, it just feels very successful. But this, it turned out really, really well. So if you guys want copies, they will have some here at City Hall. Actually, the Hampton Inn today just said that they will help us put a magazine in every single room in their hotel. So that way, when visitors come, they can look through it, and it'll help to kind of get more eyes on the publication and more patrons to the local businesses around here. So this is the first year we've ever done anything like that, but I think it's going to be really successful. So we're just excited.
I just want to add your vision on that magazine, I think, and I know, Jesse, you were really instrumental, instrumental in that.
Absolutely.
But I remember when I was asked to join the Chamber back in like 2011, I'm like, what is the Chamber of Commerce? And I felt like I was looking for the first time through new eyes in that magazine, like what is the Chamber? And it just so easily, like, this is what we host, this is what we offer, this is how we move through the community. Sometimes we're not seen, but we're the ones behind the scenes making these events happen. So I just think you did a fabulous job.
I just had goosebumps. Thank you. That's exactly the experience that I wanted people to have when they were looking through it. Because, I mean, that was a question I had. What does the Chamber of Commerce do? What is our significance? What is our value? And I'm glad that that communicated, to be able to share with people that this opportunity exists and, you know, to get involved or to promote your business, you know what I mean? Whatever is your, you know, your means or whatever you need, we want to be there for that. So I'm so grateful that that, that you communicated that way.
Awesome.
So just a couple things we've got coming up. A ribbon cutting on April 14th for the Boot Barn. So those are, they're going to be opening up finally. We have new networking on April 20th. It's going to be hosted at Sofol's Survival in his store on Main Street. So that should be a really fun one. And then we have a ribbon cutting for Quick Quack, another Quick Quack, on April 25th at 4:30 PM. So.
The one on Canyon Road?
Mm-hmm. Yep. I know, we were like, wait a minute.
What day was that? I'm sorry.
What's that?
What day?
Oh, that is April 25th at 4:30 PM. So it's a little bit later in the day per their request.
Highway 6, not Canyon Road, right?
Yeah, Highway 6. Highway 6, yeah.
Oh.
Canyon Creek Parkway.
Perfect. And that's our report from the Chamber of Commerce, guys. Thank you for your time and for your support.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Just a couple of things to add to Kathleen's report there is, one of the things that came out in the magazine that's been asked for in the community for a long time is a map of the community. And that's in every magazine, along with a list of events, whether City, Nebo School District, Salem City's also in there. So really awesome way to help people that are coming into our community to know what's going on. Second, with the Chamber of Commerce, Kathleen, Shane did say that if the bunny ever retires, that he would gladly wear that suit.
Easy.
Wow.
Sure. So that was that. And then last thing that I have is, I just want to give public thanks to our public service departments. They've had a rough couple weeks, but have acted in such a professional manner and made sure that we as citizens know that we're taken care of. So thank you. Thank you for what you do, day in and day out, even when it's not seen, but when it is seen, the best of the best. I think Mayor Menon Hall has said it all the time, is that we live in the best community in the world, in my opinion. And it's because of those that serve us. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Carden, Councilman Argyle.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just, I also want to thank Kathleen for, I know it's a lot of work to put that together, especially the adapted. It's a pleasure to go watch that and see that take place. Our role as a council is pretty limited. We show up and we get to give away a few bikes. But if you are sitting there when one of some of those kids come, and we had one of them who kept looking back at her dad and saying, so I get that bike. And he'd say, yep, so I get that bike. She's got a helmet, too. So it's a special experience to hand those bikes out. They're pretty special when you get a bike, especially if it's your first bike, regardless of the size of it. So thanks, Kathleen. I know it doesn't last long. That horn goes off and it's over pretty quick. So, and always has been. So thank you. Thank you for the council, the Chamber. Had an opportunity to go to Washington for the National League, spent some time, some classes back there. The people I work with at the choir told me, don't get on the metro and don't walk the streets. The first thing that happened was Seth bought us a metro card, and we got on the metro. And everywhere he wanted to go, he wanted to walk the streets. So this is a little city boy from a small town who's a little bit nervous about going to Washington, this great big city. But what an awesome experience. We got an opportunity to see some things, listen to some things. When I go to the council or a conference like that and listen to some of the things that's going on with some of the other communities and get to send these breakout classes, my thoughts were always because, and we are so blessed, instead of holding that in Washington, you people need to come to Spanish Fork and see how we do this, because we do it pretty well. Looking back and listening to some of the things that take place back there, we do it pretty well in Spanish Fork and in Utah. And we are lucky to have Cameron Dill as our president of the league. He fights for us on the hill. He fights for us on the national level and protects our little cities, all of them in our Utah. It was a great experience. Had the opportunity to see some of the greatest things of America and some of the not-so-good things of America. But it was a good experience and grateful for the opportunity to go there. Also, UNPA, Jesse mentioned that, UMP is all, UNPA is our, who our coalition, where electric power is, and it's always changing. It's so great to hear the assets that we have as a sixth city. It's great to know where we're going and some of them assets that we are looking at to build. I think one of the highlights, I'm pretty sure probably every one of them, was a group of young women had come up with an idea. They called it Squeeze the Duck. However, when they squeezed the duck and yelled, I think I yelled out loud, because they squeezed it pretty loud. But their idea was really simple, had to do a solar panels, and they presented it in such an awesome way and an idea that's great and probably will take hold in a few places. Always hear some new ideas and some things that are going on. Of course, nuclear is going on as we look, move forward to our reliable coal plants, being come less and less of our assets. We're looking to increase our assets. So we continue to provide plenty of power for our community, too, so that when that switch is flipped, our power comes on. And UNPA does such an awesome job with those guys. They buy and sell power on a regular basis, which saves us a ton of money is electricity. When I think about the library, eight years ago, when I was in a council, well, I was actually probably up to Zermatt, when we have our couple of days where we do our review over the year, I remember the then director of the library telling that she's out of space, she doesn't have any, she'd been out of space for a very long time. And it's been a long time coming. I'm so sad that I missed the walk across the street. I know Chief Johnson was fretting, closing down the street, but what an awesome thing we did. And I think they moved 8,000 books. Is that right, Seth? 8,000 books?
Yeah, 75,000.
8,000 books. We have 75,000. So, but they made a dent. And it was such an awesome show. And we even got some good TV screen time out of it. So the library's here. It's such an awesome, we'll be having a ribbon cutting soon. You'll have an opportunity to go see that. Our Chamber is going to move over into that building. It is such a, will be such a higher class and available so that we can have more people there and be able to conduct it in a more professional way. And I am so excited about our library and being a part of that. And that's April 29th, ribbon cutting for our new library. I think I just want to mention that we had a meeting, and I know this is probably on everybody's minds, being it snowed for the last two days. Just want you to know that we had a meeting and had some people attend concerning the river and the mitigation and that. I'm sure it's on most people's mind. I want you to know that our city has been working on it long before today. Our Public Works and Jamie's had his crews there, working constantly, trying to mitigate that river, do some things in that river. There are some challenges there. When we think about the last time that it was high water was 2011. And that seems like that's just not too long ago. But on the other hand, when you look at the river and have an opportunity, we are working on that. It's a constant issue. We don't know what we're going to do with all this water. We need to get it to the lake. We need our reservoirs to fill up and stuff like that. And we pray for, maybe not pray for snow anymore, but pray for cooler weather, so that that comes down in a timely manner. I look up Salt Lake, in 84, we built a river down Third West so that they could get their water out of the canyons. Pretty sure they're going to be building that again, because they don't have rivers and they just got little streams and stuff. And to think about 70 feet of snow up there in them mountains is unreal. It just, it's unreal. And some of them lifts, if you've noticed on the news, they've actually closed down because the snow was so high, they can no longer pack it underneath the lift, so they're closing it down. But just want you to know that we are doing our best efforts and preparing. Now's the time for us to prepare. That hopefully will, cooler weathers will start that melt in the next month or so. And we'll get through this together, one way or another, we'll get through it. But we're working hard to make that as minimal as possible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Argyle, Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to report on just a couple of conferences that I attended. Chad and Jesse both mentioned the UNPA conference, which is our power conference. Spanish Fork is fortunate to be a member of UNPA. Mayor always calls it, you know, being part of a power city. And we definitely are fortunate to be part of that group. Helps keep our energy costs down as residents. One thing that was interesting that I took out of that was there is a very large or very big push to move towards or increase renewables and get off of coal, decrease in coal. And renewables, what that means is solar and wind. So a lot of the industry is moving in that direction. Also, a lot of new technology around nuclear, which is exciting. Couple of new plants, I think, that are being built in Wyoming, kind of with a new technology, a new type of nuclear, that could, we could see some huge benefits from. Not quite flux capacitor type stuff, but some pretty cool, interesting technology when it comes to nuclear.
Pretty close, though. Pretty close.
Pretty close. So pretty exciting things going on there. That was a great conference. The other one I attended two weeks ago was our water policy conference, our water policy workshop. Just a few updates and information on that one. We had Laura Hansen from the governor's office give a report. Utah is still the fastest-growing state in the nation. May feel like it slowed down a little bit, but in comparison, we are still the fastest-growing May feel like it slowed down a little bit, but in comparison, we are still the fastest-growing state in the nation. And with that comes the concern of the drought. We are in still, even with all of the snow and the winter that we've had this year, we're still in a 20-year-below-average precipitation level. 50% of the statewide average of our reservoir fill level, so we're still only half-full on our reservoirs. The conference, they said, even with the winter that we've got right now, we need one more just like this to be completely out of the drought. So, we're not there yet. We, after the summer hits, they estimate that our reservoirs will still be at about 50%. So, we've still got a long ways to go when it comes to conservation, you know, being aware of what we all can do when it comes to conserving water. Lots of agencies, she mentioned lots of state agencies are being created and are focusing on water and what we can do there. Another interesting thing, they talked about inflation impacts on water projects. There was one group that approached a city. The city needed a water project done. They approached them, gave them a bid. Bid came in where the city wanted. Then elections took place. New city council came in and said, "You know what? We're going to hold off. We're going to wait. We're about maybe a million short of what we're comfortable with, so we want to save up another million before we go forward with this project." So, they pushed it off, waited a year, saved up that extra million, readdressed it with the company, got another bid, and the bid had gone up an additional million dollars from the initial bid a year prior. So, inflation impacts are affecting everybody, including projects within cities. So, that was a concern or an issue they addressed. Another class I attended was water banking. Mountain Evil Water Agency, which I sit on the board there, were looking at a water banking project that we're doing here in South County, which will hopefully, if we're able to get this off the ground and moving forward, will make it easier to use water in a productive way between farmers and all those that have water rights. Also, wanted to mention that a lot of water legislation was put in place this year up on the Capitol. They talked about a lot of the bills at this water policy workshop, and just wanted to recognize Mike McKell, who's our senator. His name was brought up many, many times for the many good bills that he presented and sponsored concerning water. So, wanted to give him some credit there. Chad mentioned also, the city is very much aware of the amount of water we have in the mountains. We just had a work session prior to this meeting where we got an update. The city is very much aware and working very hard to do what we can as a city to clean out the river, to have the river prepared and ready when that water starts to flow. So, grateful for what they're doing there. And I think that's all I had, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Euler. Thanks for attending those conferences and your meetings. Councilman Marshall.
My turn.
Your turn.
All right, sit back and relax. It's going to take about a half hour. We're good. First of all, Chief Johnson, Chief Hells, great job this last couple of weeks. Every time something would come in, I'm like, "Well, that's going to be something we talk about." And then something else would come in, and like, "Well, that's something we're going to be talking about." It just seemed like it went on and on and on. Thank you for you. Thank you, guys, and your staff. Amazing job. I know last, was it Wednesday? It was a challenging time for everyone that is in Spanish Fork, but our first responders handled it super well. Congratulations to you guys. Appreciate it. One thing I learned through that process that is that having a one source of truth is extremely important. I think Nick tweeted out or posted something on Facebook that I think helps calm the nerves a little bit, and the more accurate we can be with that and the more timely we can be with that. There's nothing to post. We need to, don't post anything, right? But we need to make sure we're reporting people that one source of truth, because rumors are just rampant. I got a couple of calls and, "No, that's not happening. The kids are going to come out in five minutes," and these folks are just nervous and understandably nervous. So, it is nice to have that one source of truth, and thank everyone that participated and did such a great job. It's awesome. I got to attend my first-ish solid waste board meeting this last week. I missed the last one because I was just a little bit late, like an hour and a half. They weren't even in the room when I showed up. But this time they're there. So, we talked about the budget. For everyone that wants to know, on May 24th, over in Springville, we're going to approve the budget for the solid waste district. It's just north of $50 million a year. It's a big production. I had no idea. That's the look that was on my face, Jesse, when they showed me the budget.
It's a lot of money for waste.
Yeah. It's expensive to gather all that material and dispose of it somewhere. Interesting enough, recycling is almost four times as much as normal trash pickup, and they're looking for ways to inform the public about what's the right stuff to recycle, so those costs can come down. Because one month it may be metals, one month it may be cardboard. But if you get that mix right, it could really drive that cost down, because it's a commodity that gets sold. So, it's very interesting. Update on the new transfer station. I think Kevin showed some pictures last week or a month ago.
A month ago.
If you drive out today, you can see a bunch of concrete. Those aren't walls. That's not the outside of the building. That is the interior push wall. So, the outside walls aren't coming up yet. That's very interesting. But it's still on schedule, under budget. It is a muddy mess down there, as you can all imagine. Construction right now is not the best. Parks and Rec was canceled due to Dale not being able to attend, so we'll get to that next month. Is that good enough to say? I can say that, right?
I said, "No, we love Dale."
We love Dale.
He's watching.
Absolutely. He's not watching. Well, Dale, get better. We miss you. I'm glad you're okay. Utah Lake Authority met this last week. The Utah Lake Commission is now dissolved, so we're on to the Lake Authority. We approved a management plan for the lake. Its mission, I'll just read what the mission is. The Utah Lake Authority leads a cooperative effort to identify, fund, and implement projects and programs to enhance the lake's ecosystem, recreational opportunities, and thriving communities. So, it's not just about water. It's about the entire ecosystem of the lake and making sure that it's better that we can use, recreate on, and it's good for our environment. So, it's a good authority. I think it's going to be a difference in the lake. And if you care about the lake, come to those meetings, participate in it, give them the feedback, give us the feedback. It's very open, so please do. And I think that is it for me.
It wasn't a half hour.
I know.
Good information.
I stored it all up for that one time.
Thank you, Councilman Marshall. Councilwoman Beck.
Well, being the last one, I don't want to echo every single thing everyone else has said, but I can't let any, anything go by any more time without giving just some recognition to our police department, fire, and EMT for the last month. It's been super busy. They are heroes walking into very scary situations, and we really appreciate them. So, thank you. And to the library, the night before their last day open was an event where I think there were 400 people that came and said goodbye to the library. Everyone was able to leave their handprint on the wall, write a message on the wall. They had games. You could return all your library books without having a late fee. You could check things out, so you had, were able to keep them for the next four weeks. So, it was just a really fun night for all the people to come in and say goodbye to the library. There's a lot of good memories there. So, thank you to the director there, Scott Alet, him and his entire staff. It's been a very, very busy couple of weeks, so thank you there.
Let's put this hand right here. This is a little sketch.
Yeah, that's a little scary.
The drippy one?
Yeah.
Too much paint, I guess.
Man.
Okay, I'm not going to review the Easter egg hunt or UMPA, but I did want to touch base, our opportunity to go to Washington, DC. Our city manager, Seth Perrins, and Councilman Argyle and I were able to go, and it's such a good opportunity for us to meet on a national level with others. It's always interesting to hear the challenges of other cities and states, and sometimes I think, "Oh, it's just Utah up against some of these unique challenges." But when we were in a meeting with the Western states, we were all facing a huge amount of growth. I mean, we hear that Utah's, you know, the number-one fastest-growing state in the nation, but the Western United States are all facing problems with housing and homelessness. So, we're not alone with theirs. So, it's really great to communicate, and our directors of each league, like Cameron, is visiting with them. They have our backs. They're watching out for us, and so it's just really good to get together and see how everyone else is doing and see what we can do better. And then we were also able to meet with our congressmen and senators on some local railroad and airport issues about funding, which really affects all of us with traffic overall. And so, these were super great meetings. So, we appreciate Seth setting those up. Are you left over there?
You have the ring on.
Oh.
But, Super Bowl ring. Stacy has it on.
Yep. So, I will not drag out anything else, and that'll be all for me.
No, you're not dragging out. That's good information. I appreciate you guys going out to that conference, the NLC. I think a response that we came up with is kind of a pat response when other cities would ask, "Well, how is everything running so smooth in Spanish Fork and your cities in Utah?" I think you guys kind of said it. We say, "Well, stop doing what you're doing in your cities and do what we're doing in our city and in the state of Utah." So, it's good to go out there and maybe have some sanity in a city that sometimes doesn't seem very sane. So, good work. And good work, everybody, going to your committee meetings and reporting. To not sound like a broken record, but what everybody said about the last couple of weeks of our public safety personnel, our response teams, we, again, there's a lot of reasons why we live in the best place in the country here, and you guys are part of it, those people that take care of us in our time of need. I was, I would tell you, it's not easy when you're 3,000 miles away. The text and obviously getting that news at 4:00 in the morning, the first text I sent was to some of the people we were with, just that, "Hey, I'm getting a flight ready for me and Amber to come home." And obviously, Amber, just like all you other moms and dads out there, was hair on, pretty much on fire, right? Which is understandably. And the response I got from a colleague out there said, "So sorry to hear about your situation. Please let me know if anything we can do to assist. Safe travels home. We're thinking of you and your family." And it wasn't a couple hours later where I ran into this woman, and she says, "I thought you guys were catching a flight. I thought you were leaving." And she was astonished that. I said, "No, it's, you know, thankfully, it wasn't a real thing." But she commented on how calm we were, and part of the reason why we were just calm is because of everybody handling it, you guys handling it, and the community handling it. So, thank you so much, not just from somebody in this position, but from, you know, from worried moms and dads. You did your job. I sent Nick a picture of a tour we took two weeks ago with a couple of folks from the All Abilities, to the All Abilities Park. They were from Heber. This is before we thought that it wasn't going to be under eight inches of snow again this year, but it was just raining that day. But they commented on, again, and you can see Dale walking good there at that time, too, which we know he'll be back to his old self soon enough. But they commented on all components of this, how great it was. So, thank you to the vision of our Parks and Rec Department, the people who donated their time, special needs families who helped us get that right. It is a shining part of our city that a lot of cities want to replicate and do just like we've done. So, they were very impressed, and thank you to the contractor that helped us there as well. Keeping on parks, you maybe saw it on social media. We had to release that we closed some bathrooms for a time at the North Park. What a bad, what a bad deal. Just to warn you, one of our Parks guys got ahold of me over the weekend and let me know that damage that was vandalism of a kid thinking, I don't know what he's thinking, to do what he did, but it rose to felony charges. I mean, it was enough damage that it rose to a place where that, I mean, that's on someone's record for forever. Is it forever? I mean, I don't know. You can get that stuff off after a long time. But please, please, remind your kids, remind everyone that you can. This is our facilities. These are our facilities. And senseless damage in a place that you maybe think you can get away with it, there's not too many places in town you can get away with it. And this young person didn't, and I feel, I do, I feel bad for the city. It'll be repaired. I feel bad for him. That's a tough thing to have on your record. Don't do it. Don't do any damage to public property and especially these parks that are really a shining part of our city as well. UMPA's mentioned. Thank you all for attending those conferences as well. While I was out of town, we do have a shovel turning next Tuesday, the 11th, 5:00 PM, down in Nephi. Nephi is one of our members of UMPA as well, for a local power plant that we're going to build there. So, when you talk about being part of an organization that coordinates with each other, it's because reliability of power, delivery of power, super important, and so we're excited to turn shovels next week with them. It's already been mentioned as well, but again, the water situation, I would just say, yes, we are keeping an eye on it. If you haven't got the links to watch the height of the river, Seth has those now, and he can talk a little bit about it. But you'll see city crews being pulled from all different areas of the city to be working where we can, up and down the river, both inside the city and through county property as well. But again, appreciate the farmers, the landowners, working with us to be able to get in there and try to do some reclamation, some preparation for when water starts coming down. Seth, anything you can add to that for the residents of the snapshot in time that is maybe before the next storm that's coming? I don't know when that's coming, but...
Thank you. Keep me in bounds. I went off the rails last time we were here, so... This map shows you a little bit of a playbook of where the river is today, sorry, where the snowpack is today in the mountains that are, that flow into the Spanish Fork River. We are in uncharted waters, pun totally intended. We have 30% more snow than we've ever had before, and we have 200%. If we didn't receive another drop of snow today, from, for the rest of the year, and every day we get a little bit closer, but if we didn't receive another drop of snow up there, then we'd be 218% of normal. But we're 215% of normal for today. This is the average year, and you can see that in the average year, the melt typically starts already, about April 1st. And every year's different, and you can see a couple of previous years, when the snow started to melt, we didn't even see it in the river. You know, last year, I think the water flowed at about 200 CFS for like three days, and 200 CFS is nothing. So, it all depends on how the water comes off the mountain at this point. And the faster we heat up, the worse it is. And so, we really could use about six weeks of 72 degrees, just right there. We get into the 80s, we get into the 90s, then it will start to melt a lot faster. So, every day that is cold right now means that it gets us a little bit closer to those warmer days. So, we would love 72 and sunny, you know, for the next six weeks, and that might do us just right. You can see with this particular, the not flood year, we had a high snowpack 2011, and that, we had good 70 degrees, and we had some cold spells, and 70 degrees and some cold spells. And you can see how the melt took about from May 1st until about June 15th. So, it took about a six-week time span for that melt to happen. You can see in these flood years, it started melting, we'll call it May 20th, and it was done June 10th-ish, so what, 20 days? And this melt was May 5th-ish and was done May 28th-ish, you know, about 20 days. And that is a timeframe you don't want. If you can have the melt be 30 days, that's better. 40 days, that's better. 50 days, right? So, we really do want some measured releases due to good temperatures. We've been studying the river a lot. releases due to good temperatures. We've been studying the river a lot. Every year the river sediments as materials come down. And so you'll see a lot of machinery out in the river right now, in the next couple of weeks, moving some sandbars, removing sandbars. And this is really a sad story to tell, but right now is probably the best time that we will have to actually do this kind of work. And so some might say, "Why don't you do this every year?" And it really is difficult for us to do river maintenance on non-flood years because permits are harder to get from those that regulate the permits. There are some federal approvals that come and some state approvals that come. But in years like this, federal agencies waive their review periods. And so it just, it becomes a lot easier for us to be able to do the work that really we should be able to do year after year. It'd be a lot better. So you're going to see some machines in the river, just removing sandbars. And sandbars get deposited every year and especially since 2018, since we've had those fires. And there's been a lot of soil that's come off of the mountains when it rains and we have those waters come off. They grab the particles and debris from those burn scars and it runs into the river and as the water slows down, it begins to deposit on our banks. So we have a lot of sandbars. And so you'll start to see crews out there and we're excited that they can do that. We've, like I started to say, we've studied the river. And I won't spend a lot of time on this, but this is an area around the golf course. We have a good sense of if the water gets to certain levels, where it will breach the channel and where it can flow onto the golf course in a few areas. And so we'll do a little bit of work to shore up the river channel along the golf course. We've been studying and have for years had a good flood map of a 1% flood chance year. That's what all of these colors kind of outline. And we know where the bends in the river are and there's good armoring in most of those. And we'll spend a little bit of time armoring the river this month as well. And working with, working with the neighbors and our properties in the area. We held a meeting with the residents that back onto the river last week. I think somebody mentioned that in their comments. Great discussion with them. We had a really good review of the detail and some of the challenges that they need to prepare themselves for and how they can prepare themselves and what the city's doing. This isn't going to make a whole lot of sense to us here, but I'll spend just a brief second reviewing with you some of the things we reviewed with them. There's a little bit of armoring work that needs to happen on this bend as water comes down and shoots off of here. It could erode here and it could shoot up here and erode into the park there. So there's a little bit of armoring work that has to happen there.
Can you explain what armoring work is?
Sure. Let me, I'll dive deeper into that in just a second. A little bit of armoring and a little bit of some levee work there, some armoring, levee work right there. And then these red lines are what could become sandbag lines. We've done some distance work and calculated how many sandbags it would take to build a two and a half to three-foot high sandbag wall. And what it takes to build a sandbag wall, for those that wonder, you don't just put a sandbag on top of a sandbag on top of a sandbag, but to build three feet high, you start with a three-foot base. So it takes about 16 to 18 sandbags to build about a foot, a foot wall, three feet high. And so we've got sandbags to be able to do that and protect the assets that are in this area that we think could be vulnerable if the water comes down quite a bit. Armoring, that's what you wanted me to talk about?
Yeah.
If you go along the river and look on most of the banks and you see what look like maybe granite rocks, boulders that are kind of jagged and they're along the river bank, that's armoring. And that was placed there on purpose. That wasn't a stone that was deposited maybe through runoff. And that armoring makes it so the bank, when, if it's done right, towed into the ground and built up, if it's done right, that protects, it's basically an armor, right, like a knight in olden days. It's an armoring that as water comes and hits, so water obeys the laws of physics, right? And as an object in motion hits something that wants to make it change, it doesn't want to change. And so it will chew on the bank where that water is hitting. And if you can armor that river bank with rocks or some kind of an armoring like that, then it will push the water off without letting the bank erode. And the challenge, the biggest concern I think you face in a river like ours is the erosion of the river bank. Topping the river is certainly a possibility, but if it erodes and begins to erode, then that's where it will eat into the park. That's where it will eat into maybe a home. And you might have some images in other cities where that's happened. So, armoring, the river was armored quite a bit in the 80s after those floods. And you can't see the armoring now because it's got 40 years of growth, 40 years of sandbars. But if you and I walked out there, we could just, I could show you where all that armoring is and it would make you feel a lot better about most of the river channel. But there's still a few places here and there where that work can happen. We've identified those in these studies. So, I think that's, we don't want to talk about that. Anything else you want me to talk about?
Any questions for Seth that residents have asked you guys in the last little while?
We talked just briefly about, back on the prior image before this one, that's a lot of sandbags, right? If you're building five by four by three. What's the city's priority or what's the city's plan? If it gets worst-case scenario, we start to get into the 80s and 90s and it's coming quick, what are you, what's the city's plan for residents as far as them to get sandbags? Do we know what we're going to do there yet?
Absolutely. We spoke about this with these residents. There will be a number of places we have, we will have identified on our maps for our purposes where we could, where we think we could need sandbags and where we could deposit them and use them in the places where we think they would need to go. And then when we know where they need to go, we will know, you know, take it to site 1, 2, 7, 8, you know, whatever those numbers end up being. But we'll have those pre-identified. If it's along a backyard here, let's say in this neighborhood here, we'd probably deposit sand in the driveway of, let's say, this home here and that home there and that home there, or something like that, every other home. And the neighbors in the area, and we would put out a call to the world, if you will, to come and help fill sandbags and have an army of people to just bring a shovel. We've got a handful of different contraptions, some mechanical, some really ingenious, like, you know, a ladder that has a cone and you stick your sandbag underneath the cone and you shovel in the cone, it fills up the sandbag, that kind of stuff, right, where you can do a lot of work filling sandbags. But the residents will receive, I think, a call at some point. And somebody might say, "Well, let's do it right now. Let's start today." And you don't know where all the sandbags specifically are going to be needed. And if we go build that wall today, it will fall apart before the river gets higher. The sun will probably begin to eat at it, kids will knock it over, whatever the case may be. And so it's really not something that you can do on our river two months in advance. It's really not going to work well.
Same time, when it does get close, personally, I would not want my kids
Oh, man.
there putting up volunteer mindset here. Everybody come and help, right? If the river's getting high, I don't want kids anywhere near it. So make sure that adults are leaving their kids home when they come.
It will be a site to look at the river. In this area here of the river channel, you're going to see the river some 100 feet wide. And to anybody that knows the river today, they'd say, "Whatever." And no, it'll be some 100 feet wide.
Yeah.
Which is really cool to see. And if you're going to go and see it, then enjoy it from 50 feet away from, you know, the river bank. Because it's just, it looks nice. But I have it on good authority from one who has climbed into a river like that, it's not nice underneath that one or two feet. And it's got a lot of current, a lot of speed. It's very, very dangerous. So, yeah. And I think we'll have high water along that river. I think we'll have high water probably for two months, maybe longer. I hope longer, frankly. It'd be great if it was three or four months because that means we'd probably get out of this okay. So, yeah, you want to stay away from that water. There will come a point where you won't be able to get underneath Main Street. So if you exercise on the trail, you'll have to go to the crosswalk. And we'll close that gate off on both sides of that and you'll just have to cross on Main Street. And it might be four months before you can get back underneath there. And when we do open that up, you'll see this much sedimentation on the sidewalk. It'll take us a couple of days to get rid of all that.
Beware, there's pictures of heavy equipment, maybe at some bridge places and everything. We're anticipating that being the case. So make sure we're not messing with that. We're staying clear of that, right?
Yeah, thank you. You'll see, you will see every bridge in town and a couple upstream and a couple other places, you'll see pieces of heavy equipment there, ready to go. Because bridges are dams. And as a big tree comes down, it will hit and stop. And we don't want that to back up. Equipment at each of those bridges for a time might make traveling there a little bit cumbersome because it turns into a one-lane road. But that may be what we have to do, right? Just to make sure that we've got the material.
Maybe close.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't close all of them. But, yeah. It will be difficult. Yeah, there's one, I think, that might get closed. Certainly is a possibility that it might get closed, maybe two. So, yeah. It's a lot of, it's consuming a lot of time and thought and we've, I think, as a community, been praying for a lot of water. And I think that's good. Now's the time to adjust those and say, and ask for moderate temperatures. Water, this is good. We need it all. Now we need moderate temperatures.
Adjust your waters. Thanks, Seth. Appreciate it.
Mayor, can I just editorialize this for a sec?
You bet.
This has been a very interesting meeting. Start with an incredible Easter egg hunt. The community comes together and shows what we're capable of. And then there's a children's book of Stacy and Chad Go to Washington, where...
Children's book?
That's what it's about. But they learned that there is, but we have like a special sauce here in Utah. Like, come to... 100% because of what the community does. And then you show some pictures of an incredible investment in our community at the All Abilities Park. And it's, and then Seth talks about this. And this will be, again, a flood will be a community event where we, as a community, not a city, a community comes together and helps our neighbors. That's what makes Spanish Fork great. And I know when that call goes out, because that call's going to go out. The call is going to go out to come help. People will show up. And it may be city organized, but it'll be community-led. And that's like, time and time again, every time we sit here, we talk, we show examples of why it is a great place to live in Spanish Fork, why when you go to DC, you see the problems they have or other places have. And they don't have this community backbone that we have. This really, this historic legacy of coming together as a community. It's, there will be some bad days ahead. That's way too much snow in the mountains to not experience something. And I know for sure that when the call goes up, people will respond and they'll come to their neighbor's aid. And we'll all get through this and we'll get through it successfully because, just like the Easter egg hunt, we've all stepped up and we come together. So, it's been a cool meeting. Thank you for allowing me to editorialize a little bit.
That's a good point. That's a good point. Tough times can make a good moment out of it. And I know we're all ready for it. So bear with us.
Mayor, can I maybe give some visuals to what we just talked about? Go to slide number six. So this is a picture back in 2011. This is armoring. And so if you see this right here, that's armoring. This is a sandbar. And that is a sandbar that has grown for a long time. You can see a tree stump right here and you might think, "Oh, that's part of the riverbed." That is a sandbar. And those happen every year and they get added to every year. You wouldn't even know that it's happening. It just happens kind of slowly. That's armoring and that's a sandbar. This is a river that you don't typically get to see, right? That's probably 80 or so feet wide, right there.
Is this in 11 as well?
This is in 2011. Yeah. That's flowing at probably 12 or 1300 CFS. So, yeah. So that just gives you a sense that it'll be really wide and stay away. Do not, don't go kayaking in that river, please.
Kevin?
My wife says no.
Hang the kayaks out.
11 was an interesting year. I was still at UDOT and the bridge that goes over, under, I guess, I-15 goes over the river, there was this constant visual sort of like, "Where's the river at today? How close is it overtopping? Like, do we need to close I-15?" And...
This is 11?
This was 11. And things have changed since 11, right? It has way more capacity. But you look at that graph, it's coming.
You didn't plan for that.
No. It's coming. And yes, we hope that it comes off slowly, but it ends at the end of May on every single one of those bars. And so, it's coming. The city's going to do their job to be prepared. It's going to take the community's...
Residents, yeah, residents can't just say, "Okay, the city's going to step in and save me." Residents need to be preparing as well.
Yeah. There's nothing that we can do to preempt Mother Nature. Oh, that's a little dark, isn't it?
You can see it, though.
Yeah.
Which, do we know which one this is?
Absolutely.
I can't remember.
Do you want to tell us?
For those of us that don't know.
You can keep it a secret. That's okay.
This is the I-15.
This is I-15.
This is the I-15 Bridge in 2011.
Okay.
It's a really long span. So you've got, even though you're only a foot and a half, two feet, whatever the distance is, you've got a really long span. So there's a lot of capacity in there. But, I mean, that, yeah, you're watching that because it's getting higher and higher. The bridge is different today than it was back in 11. So it doesn't look like this anymore. But there is nothing that we can do in the end to trump what Mother Nature does. So we just are going to have to react. And we're preparing and preparing as best we can and residents can do their parts as well, need to do their part. But in the end, when she holds the trump card, we'll just react.
And if we look at this, this is 2011. There are some charts and graphs you can go to that show the discharge throughout every single day, how much water's coming down the river. The max discharge in 2011 was 1,600.
That was the mean. I think the max was somewhere around 19.
Yeah. So the mean was 1,600 cubic feet per second. In 84, I think it was 3,600.
The high point one day was 37.
And so it really does depend on how quickly it warms up.
And we have 30% more than 83.
Yeah. So like Shane says, it's, there is, there's not a high likelihood. I mean, we will flood. There will be flooding. It's just how much can we mitigate and how warm is it going to get?
So we got it kind of mixed up. This whole eight inches of snow we just got, we should have had 70-degree weather. But, you know.
Which, if you look at the 10-day, we've got some nice 70-days coming, so.
That's a good point. It was, while we were in the 20 inches that we were talking about last meeting here, but Seth was talking about your personal responsibility at your homes, right? Talk, think about your crawl space, think about your basements, where you live and everything. So we're encouraging that. Take that into your hands and start recognizing what we can do there as individuals as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right? You're done. Okay. Okay, we're watching it. All right. Okay, if there's no other council comments, it takes us to item number six, consent items. There's A through F for consent items. Any questions or comments about the consent items from the council? If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent items.
Second?
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilwoman Beck to approve the consent items. Roll call, vote. Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Cardin.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. Takes us to item number seven. Our public hearing for tonight is an ordinance for impact fee analysis, facilities plan, and ordinance for public safety, parks and recreation, transportation, stormwater, drinking water, pressurized irrigation, wastewater and power. Impact fee analysis. Is this Jared? Mr. Jared Johnson.
Why is he all dressed up?
He was sitting there like he was not going to come up, though.
He's coming up.
I didn't know if I came up now or he had the public hearing first, so.
Well, after you explain it to us and...
Okay, so every year we update our impact fees. We're probably one of the few cities that do that. We keep a very accurate current CIP, Capital Improvement Project list. And every year we go through that and then we update our impact fees. So this just shows the increase, there is no decrease, but there's an increase on each one of the impact fees. And I'll just go through that real quick. Then if you have any questions, you can ask. So power went up 5.4%. Stormwater went up 11%. Stormwater with LID only went up 4.1 or 4.4%.
So if I want a lid on my stormwater, I have to pay more?
Yeah.
Can you just briefly explain, what is the impact fee and who pays them?
So the impact fee is paid by the building permit and anybody that builds within the city.
So this, these are new residents coming into the...
New residents, new businesses, new industrial buildings. So anybody new coming into the city pays an impact fee. And what it's for is to, it's the impact on the system because as they come in, we need to expand the system. So it keeps the burden off the current residents.
So current residents have paid for this much infrastructure... So current residents have paid for this much infrastructure. We need this much. That incremental change is paid by those that are coming, not those that are here.
Correct, exactly. Yep, so. So these are all the increases. Pressurized irrigation's the big one. We've got a lot of pressurized irrigation projects. That's with the CIP and the water line that came out of the canyon, tying onto that. Public safety is another big one. I'd probably turn to Seth on that one. I don't, if we want. And then just to finish off, transportation and parks did not increase. So the overall increase is 5.72%. We go from $21,961 for a total building permit fee, hookup fee, and impact fee to $23,217. If you go to the next slide, it'll show where we're at in comparison to the other cities.
Jared, I would assume that some of these go up, these don't go all, they don't all go up proportionally because, again, it's all incremental change. So if your pressurized irrigation is this much and you only go this much, it's not that much. But if you're...
We're expanding the cities, the demand's higher. We've gotta get new water sources and that's why the PI is going up.
Okay.
So we built the system, oh, 10, 15 years ago. Now we're having to increase that system too because of the residents. This is where we were, this is where we're going to be. We're at the higher end, but I just assume that these cities have not updated their impact fees in quite a while. We're aggressive, we do it every year. Some cities wait every 10 years. Some cities are five or six, but we do it every year, so we're accurate. We have a solid platform for it.
Sure.
If you want, I don't know if you want to explain?
Yeah, is there anybody from the Home Builders Association here? I don't think, I see them. Go back to the other image if you would, thank you. Did we review the, did that happen before the public safety impact fee happened before the meeting with the HBA? Or was it after? Do you remember?
It was after.
We added it after?
It was after.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So, the public safety impact fee is being proposed to add $173 to the impact fee, 36% increase because we have added a new ladder truck into the, I guess you'd call it the IFFP for that as well, right? The impact fee facilities plan. It's, public safety's a little bit different than streets or pressurized irrigation because it doesn't necessarily have projects, but you can put buildings and you can put a ladder truck. And when we buy a ladder truck, 10 years ago, a ladder truck was about a million dollars. Of you six up there? Or of anybody in the crowd, minus Eddie. Where did Eddie go?
He'd leave.
Did he leave? Okay, we can ask him while he's not here. How much do you suppose a ladder truck costs today?
Two and a quarter.
Okay, I don't like your answer. You're not too far off though. But you are over. Anybody else?
Million eight.
I think Matt, I think you are disqualified. But it's about a million eight. And it's a two and two and a half, two to two and a half year wait to get it. We don't need a second ladder yet, but industrial growth probably will drive that second ladder. Eventually we'll replace the ladder that we have, but having a new one. And this wouldn't replace the ladder that we have, this would be having a second ladder in our fleet. And that may take 10 years or 15 years before we're ready to buy it, but that is being added to the impact fee facilities plan for public safety. Question that I have for you is, do you wanna do that at $173? Do you wanna do that all this year? We can choose to do half of that this year and half of that next year. Where we, this has been noticed and discussed in this manner. If you want to take that increase down from 36% to say 16% this year and then instruct us to bring the remainder of that back next year, we can do that. I asked about the Home Builders Association because when we, we present this to them, this was added after that meeting and we didn't want that to feel like it was a trick on them. Just some additional data came back, unfortunately, timing-wise, after their meeting. And so we, we certainly appreciate the feedback that we get from the home builders. But that is one that, that is new. We haven't raised the public safety impact fee for a few years, right Jared? That's not one we've seen, that would typically be a zero, but where we've added that new, that ladder truck into the IFFP for that, that particular impact fee, that's the impact to the fee itself. So we'd certainly welcome some discussion from you in terms of how you'd like to see that.
When, when the, I guess, what's the timing of an impact fee? So for example, in an industrial complex, that's gonna take a while to build out. So is the impact fee at the beginning of that project or at the end of that project or all of the above?
With every building permit that's pulled, an impact fee is paid. So whenever somebody gets a building permit, if you're gonna build this, you've got a 10-building industrial subdivision, you're gonna build it one building at a time.
Every building.
Each building permit would have its own impact fee. Same thing with a house, right? It's not specifically tied to a resident. If you live here and build a new house, you don't get a pass on an impact fee. You pay an impact fee with your new home as well.
Thank you. Could you argue that if you didn't, if we didn't fully raise the public's safety impact fee today, that it would be higher in a different, in a future year?
It could be, yeah. You certainly could. I mean, I, I don't know what that number would be next year, but I mean, your logic, I can see where your logic is and I think...
You didn't collect enough thanks to the truck. And it, the percent change from 173 to, I don't know, what, $80 on a $22,000 bill is pretty small.
Yeah.
But it's still a $22,000 bill.
On a single-family resident?
Single-family resident.
Yeah.
I guess 23, too.
Yep.
I would prefer to keep it as it is right there presented.
Also, this year, next year, split it between the two years, just like you got it. I like that.
So this is all in one year?
Oh, this is all?
This is all in one year. So if we split it, we drop it down, cut that number in half, for example, it would be...
Oh, I thought you said that this was half.
This is all.
Okay.
This is all.
I'm okay with that. So you can't, you said that with public safety, you can include ladder truck, but nothing else concerning?
Buildings. So the Justice Center is in that calculation already? Station 62 is in that calculation already? I'm pointing as if the world knows where I'm pointing. Sorry.
Hide it.
Thank you.
That's pretty crazy.
Everybody in the room, that was, I'm really happy to hear that, thank you.
So not the equipment?
Correct.
We budget for the equipment where we just hired these new paramedics and trucks and stuff, that's not...
None of that is by law allowed in there. I believe the only piece of equipment is greater than, is it a half a million? So there are some other pieces that could be probably put in there as well. Because what you and I would think of, we call it a typical fire truck, those are now $700,000, $800,000.
Well, and I think as many, and I've said this before, with many warehouses that we have, even last year that are built and in production right now, those ladder trucks will become, platform trucks will become more important, so I'm okay with it like it is.
Remind residents, Seth, the timeframe that we have to spend impact fees, these aren't, this isn't something that just goes into an account, sits there?
Hey, are you touching that, Jared?
Sorry.
You look really good, you need three more.
Thank you, Doug, Jared.
He's got a nice purple shirt on, he's looking good. Touch a purple. Sorry, what was the question?
The, you know, residents ask about impact fees when they build a new home, build a new building for their business or something, and that's revenue for the city. And so they're like, oh, maybe you're collecting a lot of revenue. It's, it's revenue for impacts to the city, obviously. So there's a timeframe that we have to spend that money on those, on those projects, right?
Correct, it's six to 10 years.
Correct on that?
Six. Six years. We have it out to 10 years. Our CIP goes out 10 years, but we have to spend it within six. And so, yeah, you're correct on that. So right now, we're building a water tank. We've connected to the CIP line, so those are all in, in the projects. So we've got that listed out.
Nick, if you go to the next slide, when you compare our fees to everyone else on here, are those all, all those cities giving the same impact fee structure? Like they're doing power, they're doing public safety, they're doing all the same things? Or is there differences in those impact fees?
There's differences. It's, every city's different on what they have.
So it's hard to weigh maybe completely across?
Correct.
But we have tried to equalize it as much as we can. So if City X doesn't have this particular fee or, and we do, then, you know, we're higher than they are.
Right.
But most cities don't have power and we've brought Rocky Mountain Power into the equation as best that we can.
Okay.
To try to normalize across power. So it is as normalized as we can get it.
Perfect.
Oh yeah, that's correct, we do do that. Yeah, so we do normalize it as best we can.
That's good to know, thank you.
But, but Jared, I think it's worth highlighting and restating what Jared said. We are comparing our new rate to everybody else's old rate.
Yeah, we don't know their new rate.
They very well may be having a hearing right now and, or you know, and doing the same thing. We just don't have that yet, so. If you looked at this graph in six months, it might be different because we've...
Because last time we did, this was done similar.
And we do this every year, so next year it'll be more accurate and the next year will be more accurate.
Yeah, it was similar, yeah. Perfect.
Okay, let's see if the public has any questions that might come up in addition to ask staff. I'd entertain a motion to go on a public hearing for item A.
So moved?
Second?
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Euler to go on a public hearing for this item. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to impact fee analysis? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved? Second?
Motion made by Councilman Argyle and seconded by Councilman Carden to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, the discussion's back up here. Any other questions for, for staff? Jared or Seth or anybody on this?
You know, I think it's really important that we don't undervalue this because then it shifts the burden to our current citizens, right? We, those that live here today have done their part. We're asking those that are coming in the future to do their part. If we get this wrong and undervalue it, it shifts that burden. I think it's only, it's only right, I love the fact that we do this year by year. I love the fact that it's backed up by real projects that we're going to do. It's not a simple process, but it's a transparent one. So I like the direction that Jared's headed with this.
And this, add to that is, I think that it's super important that we're taking especially public safety and these other things into, to mind when we're doing these impact fees because of the fact that the future is bright for Spanish Fork because we've taken these things into account in the past. And it's important that we continue to do that in the future or else we, like Shane said, we end up behind the eight ball. So thank you, Jared and team.
I think it's also worth noting that many of these projects that are on the list have already been done and so they've been fronted. And so we aren't in a place where we need to spend the money within six years, we're reimbursing ourselves for projects that we've already done. I think that's almost the case across the board. There may be one...
Yeah, I'm doing it every year, that's very much the case.
But I think, I think all of them are what you might say in the negative. So we're just being reimbursed for work that we've already fronted. And that keeps us, I think, in a really good place with the state in terms of how that money's accounted for and spent.
Forward-thinking as well?
Yep. Important to note, Seth mentioned the Home Builders Association. I appreciate the departments working with those organizations that keep an eye on this. We get their input, their feedback on what we're doing. So it's not just a one-off of us guessing what this is for, but it's in consultation with the, with the people that build single-family homes and build things. So it's good, good to get their insight. Okay, if there's any other, not any other discussion or questions for staff about this, I would entertain a motion on item A.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the ordinance for impact fee analysis, facilities plan, ordinance for public safety, parks and recreation, transportation, stormwater, drinking water, pressurized irrigation, wastewater, and power.
Second?
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Marshall. A roll call vote here, Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Item A is approved. Seven A's approved, takes us to item 8A. New business here. I don't know if I saw any of these folks that were here tonight, but we're making some appointments to the RAP Tax Committee. Is Megan Johnson, Gentry Yowd, Logan Minor? I don't see any of them here. Maybe they left? Did we get too long-winded and they left? I hope not.
I would not blame them.
All right.
Did you not make this motion once before?
Not this one. Parks and Rec Committee, we did that. Yep. So the RAP, if you don't know, the RAP, Recreation Arts and Parks is, is a tax collected, a penny on every $10 in our city that can only be spent on recreation arts and parks. And so that committee meets together along with Dale and some of the Parks and Rec folks to receive applications for organizations that can access some of these funds, nonprofit organizations that are, that are doing recreation arts or are on parks and recreation. So a great thing for the city to have, a great committee to serve on. My appointments that are put up for the council's approval right now on, on this committee are three names, I already mentioned them, Logan Minor, Megan Johnson, and Gentry Yowd. These are three residents that have volunteered to serve and, and have some, some experience in serving in different capacities. So I have bios of them, but I'm not gonna go through and read them. You can, you can find them in the minutes. You wanna read them?
Nope.
Okay. But good people, good, good, good people that are willing to step up and serve on this committee and we're excited for their service. So I would entertain a motion to approve my appointments of Logan Minor, Megan Johnson, and Gentry Yowd to the RAP Committee.
I move to appoint Megan Johnson, Gentry Yowd, and Logan Minor to the Recreation Arts Parks Committee.
Second?
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Carden. A roll call vote, Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Okay. Those appointments are approved. Thank you for your service, Megan, Gentry, and Logan. The minor annexation petition, item 8B, Mr. Vaughn Pecel.
Mayor and Council, this annexation, as you can see, is for about 33 acres up on the east bench. It's located about 3100 east along 100 south, just right there on the border with Mapleton. The area is within our annexation policy boundary. And so tonight, the first step in an annexation by petition is for the city council to consider whether they want to accept it for further consideration. If you do, then, we would then do a study and have a public hearing at a future meeting. The Planning Commission would also recommend a zoning designation for the property. But if you didn't want to consider it for further, further study, then you could, you know, make that motion tonight and it would be the end of it. So that is the minor annexation.
Vaughn, does the future boundary then go like this?
Yes.
And so there would be this sort of this?
Yep, there's, that's an existing island between Mapleton and then it's surrounded by Spanish Fork on the north, east and south, excuse me, northwest and south. But you can certainly shrink existing islands. There's no, there's no issue with doing that. It's, yeah, it's an odd, it'll end up being an odd boundary, for sure. It's already an odd boundary.
It's an odd boundary, yes.
We're just trying to eat away at it.
I had a question earlier from a resident. When we do something like this, so these are county addresses today.
Yep.
They come into the city, they become city addresses. Who, who in the city does that?
Yeah, his division, Sean Beecher, his staff.
Okay.
He and his staff.
All right, I guess there's a conflict between, there's a county address that's similar or identical to the city address when you get out west.
No, the county addressing to the city's addressing is actually quite problematic.
Thank you, appreciate it. Nothing to do with this, by the way, I just, it came up and so.
I was gonna say, I think there's only one resident in that spot, right?
Right.
Yeah. And we're talking about, the yellow is coming in, right?
That's the subject of the annexation petition, yes.
So this is still county for the time being?
For the time being, right. We've had recent annexations in that. This used to be part of that island. This triangle used to be part of that island. Those have come in in the past couple, three years.
It'll be a matter of time.
It's kind of confusing right now that if you live on the north side of 100 south, you call emergency services, Spanish Fork is dispatched. If you live on the south side, you have an emergency services call, they would call out Mapleton. So it's kind of a inefficient service delivery out there.
Vaughn, Utah Power and Light are major property owners on some of that unannexed area.
Right.
Have they been approached or is there a reason at this point why they aren't part of this petition?
They didn't join the petition. So the petition is where the property owner asked the city to join or to annex. And there's, there's other ways it could be brought in. And the next one is, is on the agenda, is, is a different way of doing an annexation. It's by starting it by a resolution at the city council. And then you can, you can join those in initially. I expect that those Rocky Mountain Power parcels would come in, in the future. From my experience, they haven't really had an opinion about which city they're located in. They usually don't oppose or support any particular annexation. They just come along when it's, when it's time.
Okay, any other questions for Vaughn on this item?
If you have any suggestions of things you want us to specifically study as we study it as staff, we certainly welcome insights from you in terms of things that are of, of issue, concern or highlight for you. We can, we can look at that. I will say that Kim Brenneman here from our community development staff has communicated with, I think, every property owner that's not in the city in that area. So not just this yellow area, but in all of these, all of these properties. She's communicated with every single one of those at least once, just wanting to understand where they are in terms of annexation. These islands and peninsulas are problematic in terms of some of the public safety matters. So we, we don't, we won't take that lightly as we study it. But if you have any issues or highlights you want us, if you, if you accept it and there are things you specifically want us to look at, let us know what that is and we'll make sure that we hit that.
And it looks like the key issues you're already looking at are the four listed, configuration, zoning utilities and access.
This isn't, this would be to move it to an opportunity for another meeting to have a public hearing. So this isn't a public hearing. Is the applicant here that would want to speak to this? Nobody from the minor annexation, okay. Okay, if there's no other questions or discussion up here, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve minor annexation petition.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck on item 8B. It's a roll call vote, Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Do we have to list the findings, Vaughn? We're good with Chad's motion, just wanted to make sure we're fully comfortable.
I like making the findings that are listed and stuff.
Oh, let's, let's redo.
Sorry, Chad.
The two, there's two motions.
I saw his uncomfortable face when he started voting.
Two findings, sorry, I should have got that.
Chad, I guess before Chad relists that, I've got, I guess my question, I'm wondering if we're going through the process to look at possibly annexing this into the city anyways, does it make sense for the city to have a conversation with Utah Power and Light and try and wrap that up at the same time? If, if they're typically neutral anyways, do we want to at least just ask the question?
And then Kim might have answered this question. I know that the property owners here have talked about annexing soonish. Is that still happening?
No, I've spoken to all of the property owners and they have no desire to annex. And so it's up to you guys. If you want, we can work to with Utah Power and Light.
Does that include you speaking to them?
I haven't spoken with them.
Okay. I, they would be.
In conversations with the property owners, it was, does everybody want to do this? If so, let's do it by resolution because you are an island. But you're still going to be leaving an island. So that's up to you guys. Do you want an island of the property owners and Rocky Mountain or just the property owners?
In previous conversations with Rocky Mountain Power, they have said they're pretty agnostic to what, what happens. They don't really care. But they certainly aren't leading the way. So it'll take, it'll take a little bit of work, which isn't a big deal. But we can certainly communicate with them and see if, at least for one of those parcels, so that along 100 south, we don't have that disjointed nature of other properties. Gratefully, there isn't anything on that parcel, so it's not, it's not of great concern in that regard.
Well, and then again, to reiterate, to move it forward into a public hearing, they would get notice of the public hearing that, of when that actual decision would be made to annex it or not, right?
So Kevin, would you then want to add to that motion of adding these, or at least studying?
No, the study will take place. I would just maybe say that in the meantime, you reach out to them and make them, make sure they're aware, which I think they will be. They'll get, they'll get a notification because they're adjacent to the property, right? But make them aware and ask the question is all. I don't think it needs to be included in the motion.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Argyle, can you, would you entertain amending your motion to add the findings, the two findings on that?
Motion to approve minor annexation petition and concerning the two findings. And also a request to contact you, Rocky Mountain Power concerning this annexation.
Okay.
Second.
Motion amended, amended motion, seconded by Councilwoman Beck, made by Councilman Argyle. Again, a roll call vote, Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Okay, item 8B is approved. Takes us to item 8C, resolution indicating intent to annex for the GWC annexation.
This is also an annexation on the other side of town, the north side of town, located at about 1150 west and 3800 north or SR 77. Perfect, thank you, Nick. It's about 40 acres and it's part of an existing peninsula that, unincorporated, that extends into, is surrounded on three sides by Spanish Fork City. Because it's less than 50 acres, you can signal your intent to annex this peninsula by adopting a resolution. So it's a little bit different from the petition process from the previous annexation we just talked about. If you, if you adopt that resolution, then we would have that future public hearing. The Planning Commission would recommend a zoning designation. And you would have, you know, at that public hearing, an opportunity to approve or deny that annexation at the, in the future. Tonight is just the expression of intent to do that process by adopting the resolution. The only thing I might, go ahead.
It's the same thing we just did, only led by somebody else.
This is the city initiating the annexation.
The last one was a property owner and it turns into a study of whether or not.
Yep.
This is a city-led and it turns into?
We do a lot of similar study, but yeah, it's just an alternative route.
Okay, we end up with more information at a future date to talk about it and hear from the public on it.
Right, absolutely. You'll have a public hearing in a future council meeting on this annexation. One thing I wanted to mention on this one, this was considered at a previous meeting and if you'll just update the date on the resolution, if you do decide to approve this resolution tonight.
Okay. Any questions?
I received an email, I was on the council before, and in the email they were talking about the money agriculture protection on one of the pieces of property that are there. Can you talk through that? Why, why or why not that should be considered in this?
It doesn't really have any implication on an annexation. An agricultural protection area would apply. If it's pre-existing in this case, it would just remain. It doesn't affect whether it's in the county or whether it's in the city, it still would be in place. Yeah.
So it's still being.
We had one previously, a year or so ago with the J6 annexation where it came into the city and then the property owners requested to be, to have the ag protection area terminated. But that's under a different statute. They always have that right to do that.
But those property owners would still have that?
Yep, it would still persist. Their zoning would remain the same. They would be under a grandfathered version of Utah County zoning. We wouldn't change the zoning on them. Or if we did, it would be a, an analog, right? Our, our, under our zoning is very similar to theirs, so.
The only person that can get, take somebody out of ag protection is the property owner that wants to take themselves that ag protection.
Exactly, we wouldn't, wouldn't do that. It'd remain in place.
Vaughn, can you address or speak to the process? So we choose to do something tonight, one way or another. What, what are the next steps and the timelines for those next steps?
The next steps, I think, would be, there'd be a planning commission meeting where they recommend the zoning, either to adopt the cities or if, if the property owners want it to remain the same, then it would remain the same. And then it would come to the city council and have a public hearing and ordinance to be considered for annexation.
Timeline on that?
Thirty-five to 40 days.
Thank you, Vaughn. Anything else for Vaughn right now?
Maybe not Vaughn. So this came up a couple of weeks ago, it's back on the table. We received three concerns. Dave Anderson, when we was in Washington, he sent us three concerns. Can she address those three concerns?
She can.
Terry Brindley.
Yeah, we can, sure. You want to? I haven't talked to you.
Dave and I talked to Terry on Thursday and the two concerns that he expressed on the phone was the trees along that west frontage and not wanting to have those removed, as well as making sure that any development didn't impede his irrigation. With those, we would not require any frontage improvements or modifications unless they plan to develop. And then with any neighboring developments, we do ask that the developers provide a letter from the irrigation company making sure that that irrigation is not interrupted to the end user.
And that's on the person developing or annexing?
Correct.
In addition to those comments, we've also heard concerns about what, what happens with property taxes as properties are annexed in the city. Do those rates go up or down? Agricultural uses, can those be maintained or not? I think those are the two, the two main ones. And then just a general desire to not have change.
Thank you.
And then maybe referring to what you said, this was on council agenda two weeks ago, but we only had three council members and with a vote of two to one, even though there's, that's a majority of who's in the room, the vote, the vote of a council requires the majority of the council. So even if there are three people in the room, then it requires a three zero vote, if you will. And so this failed and due to that, and, and the mayor asked us to have this come back, so.
So this tonight is not a public hearing, but if it is voted and pushed through, that would guarantee a public hearing where all property owners that want to get up and speak to this would be able to do so?
Yeah, required by statute.
Not just, and not just property owners, but the public.
Public as well.
General, yeah, anybody from the public can speak to it.
We would also have more information to make a decision at that point. I mean, that, to me, that's the point of going to that next step is to gather information, gather those concerns, be very transparent about what we heard and how we would potentially address them and then make a decision to move forward. I like that thought process that we're going to know more. And today, I don't know enough to be able to say yes or no to something like that. So I like the, I like the process. I don't know how supportive I am in the, to the actual annexation, but I, I couldn't weigh in without that data.
What was you gonna say?
Oh, go ahead.
No, were you done, Shane?
I was, I was done.
So, and I was just gonna say, so what, what this actually is, we're gonna annex into Spanish Fork City. So it's gonna become property in the city. One thing in past, I've always kind of asked is, I would like to hear from the property owners. And I, I think the property owners, several of them are here, the actual property owners. I know it's not a public hearing, but I would like to hear what they have to say.
Yeah, so we do have a few property owners that are in this area. It's a, it's a big, how many acres is this?
It's 40 acres, but 10 of it.
Yeah.
10 of it is Shep's LLC.
Four separate property owners, if I'm right?
There's a couple of different property owners, but maybe, maybe a property is.
Owned by four people together.
I've got the Bronx, I've got GWC, I've got Kyle Morris and I've got Shep's Field.
Yeah, so I agree with Councilman Argyle, it's not a public, public hearing, but some of these property owners are here. So a little unconventional that it's not the public hearing to have you speak to it. That'll, that could be in a, in a, in a next, a future meeting and a couple of meetings. But, but if the property owners are here, I think, I think it's respectful to give you a couple of minutes. If you'd like to address the council, we can certainly do that. I know, yeah, so a property owner is, yes, is it Mr. Brindley?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Get, state your name so he can get it in the record that you're here.
My name's Trevor Brindley. And I'm the son of Tammy Brindley, which is one of the four owners of Shep's Field, which is the 10 acres pointer. Which is the 10 acres right here.
Thank you, Mr. Brindley.
And so we, we use this property for livestock and it's been in our family for, for many generations. So we just have a few questions and I'm, I'm speaking for my mom and her three sisters, Melanie Hansen, Shelley Hickman and Andrea Black. They're, they're the property owners and they've asked me to be their spokesman today. So we have a few questions on how this annexation would, would affect our property and affect our, our future with this property. And some of those being, why does the city want to annex this property? How is annexing this going to affect our property? And we are concerned about the road. We do irrigate, irrigate our pasture from, from the ditch that runs north, north to south on the, the west side of our property. Will that be taken? And I know she mentioned on, a, a little bit on that. But can we still have access? We've been watering livestock there for 50 years. Will the trees be taken? Will the property tax go up? Can we still be in the green belt? Can the city force us to annex? If this is annexed into the city, would the owners have to pay more additional taxes or fees or what does that look like? We need more time and more information on what this would mean for our property. We are requesting some answers to these questions. We would like them in a written form so that we could, we could review them. We'd like to know more about this, this money agricultural agreement, how that would affect our property. We've already protested this and our stance has not changed. So I guess essentially we're asking that the city council postpone their decision on moving forward with the annexation of this property, with our, with our 10 acres, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brindley, thanks for coming.
What's that? You said you water from here?
We do, yep, there's a ditch that runs north to south. And then when we take the water, it runs to the east. And that's what waters our 10 acres.
When you say, when you say postpone, postpone to me says, okay, eventually at some point in the future. What, what are you envisioning as far as postponement?
Well, we, we want to look into what it means for us.
Perfect.
And how it's gonna affect our property.
So is that what this motion would actually do is gather all this information? Because this motion would not annex you in, it's just going to study it. So you're up for studying it? Or for us to study it, you're okay with that? If we vote yes, we want to move forward and start the study?
Well, we would prefer you to vote against it tonight, so to give us more time. I, I guess I'm not sure in all the terminology.
No, that was my question because to me, I'm like, we, we want to study it.
Okay.
So we've got similar questions.
You're also gonna get answers through that and because we're not going to say, yes, let's annex it tonight. We're just saying, yes, let's all of us study it and then have a public hearing. Right?
Yeah, our direction, if we voted to go forward, that would mean our direction to staff would do exactly what you just asked us.
Answer those questions.
Answer all those questions. Then we'll come back with those in front of us and decide whether to annex it or not. Then you know, we know, because I want those answers to, to your questions too. But passing this tonight allows those folks to go do exactly that. It does not say annex you into the city.
And then you can reply in a public hearing at that time to us saying, we have most of these answered, we're concerned about A and B. And then can we work through those together?
Okay.
Is that, is that helpful?
And a very accurate response.
Yeah, so one concern we have is this road. So they, they put in a, the developer put in a new road there. And we're really concerned that they want to take our property to, to finish that road, which would cover our ditch and affect our, the way we, we water our livestock. When there's, on the west side, there's nothing. And I'm not sure why the developer didn't, didn't widen the road on the west.
Perfect.
So those are some questions we have. Our property line goes to the west side of the road, so the road is, is currently on our property. And so it's just really concerning, this, this ditch and, and our livestock, so. So yeah.
So the ditch is on, on the east side of the road, your side of the road currently that you used to irrigate?
Right.
Yep. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Brindley, thanks for coming. Thanks for the questions, appreciate it. Another property owner, I think, in the area? Yeah, one of the property owners, yep?
And applicant, pseudo-applicant.
Yeah, my name's Jared Morgan. I'm with GWC Capital and I'm the individual that's disrupting quality of life for the people in the area, so. Apologize for that. I wanted to just, I'll just, I'll answer one. I can speak to the Westfield irrigation discussion that we've been having. We, Westfield Irrigation has approved our, our plan to continue with the, the canal here. And in fact, this canal, it gets to the Blunk property. They will continue to be serviced as well and then it eventually gets. They will continue to be serviced as well, and then it eventually gets to the Brent Money property. And we have, we have culverts that will be conveying the water, getting to the Brent Money property that is the final destination for that ditch. So we don't have any, any concern of, of a disruption here in Westfield. The Westfield irrigation doesn't, doesn't either. So, but I'm happy to speak to the property owner more about that. You know, we, we've, we've tried to be good neighbors to them here in the south. I'm a part of the Clyde Companies, which is a sister comp, I'm a sister company to Sunrock and Geneva Rock, who's your next-gen item. So we try and be good neighbors. You know, we, I, we've tried our best to, to do that for the Shep family and, and the Blunk, the Blunk family as well. You know, the Blunks have gone through a lot. And we've, we've, we've been, you know, we've, we've been working with them extensively on, you know, their concerns. And Blunks have actually signed the, the annexation. They would like to be annexed. So, so have we. We own the seventeen acres here. So has Kyle Morris or Caico right here. And then could you, could you give me a little bit more of an aerial view? I just want to speak just briefly to the, the grand picture here. Others that have signed application to annex, to my knowledge, is Mr. Brent Money has filed annexation, to annex. This family here, the Hansen family, who I actually am representing that landowner, we are under contract to purchase that property. We have filed annexation, as has Lynn Hills. And so north, north of SR seventy-seven, you have six hundred and ninety-four acres of property that is, they have filed annexation into your city. We all want to be a part of your city. We've all caught the vision that you have demonstrated to us regarding Agenda Item Number Nine, regarding the inland port. We believe that this is, this is the perfect spot for light industrial, and that is what we're doing here. You annexed in the J-six property here last year. That is light industrial, and we have quality tenants. Old Dominion Trucking is actually, you'll be seeing their application here for building soon. The Boyer Company and others have, have all, all begun design. Us as well, GWC, we have, we have full design happening on industrial buildings right here. And so this is a part of a much, much bigger vision. Vaughn, Vaughn touched on, this is a peninsula. That is true today, because Brent Money and all of this property here is in unincorporated county. That will not be true once you decide to annex the Brent Money property. And this would, this forty acres would at that point become an island. And so I think it's important that we not create an island here and that we bring it all in into the, into the city.
Sure, I mean, it's, it's a stretch to say that this becomes an island. That's not approved. We haven't talked about it.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
I mean, I get what you're saying, that if this was annexed, then it would be an island, but, you know, there, there's some steps to go through to get to that point.
Yeah, and I, you know, we've done a lot of work with Springville City. Spring, this is in Springville's growth boundary. And we spent eight months with, with, you know, Troy over there in the city and, you know, Mayor Packard. And, and we've, we've done a lot of work, and the data is showing that it makes a lot more sense for us to come into your municipality than it does into Springville. Right? Hence the, the purpose of them filing an annexation. Right? And so there's been a-
To get ahead of ourselves with the company.
Yeah, I, I understand, yeah. But that is the intent. The intent is to bring it into your city, and, you know, we're talking almost seven hundred and fifty acres here. So I just wanted to give a little more context to that and and voice our opinion of that we would, we would like to be annexed, so.
One quick question on talking about the west side, the improvement, the west side of eleven hundred and fifty west, eight hundred west, whichever county, yeah, the west side of that.
Yeah.
It looked like to me that you are improving it already.
The, yeah, the west, the west side is, is getting improved, yeah.
All the way to fourth south or?
Yeah.
It's called four thousand south?
Yeah, and so we, can you zoom in, sorry, a little bit more onto the forty acres now? So, yeah, we, we're improving, we're improving this stretch of property here, as is Steve Wilson, right? Steve's actually already selling parcels here. And then we're improving what we, you know, what we intend to, to develop on the east side, right? So you'll have a full right-of-way improvement all the way down to Caico. And then depending on what Kyle wants to do there, he would have to improve his, and then eventually in the future, you know, whatever happens with this property, that's what would trigger that improvement. So you'll have right-of-way improvement to here, then it stops, and then it picks back up at Sunrock and goes down.
And that's complete, okay.
Yep.
So you and Steve, and I, yeah, so it's, so it's Steve's property that's, he's improving it also.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. I think I got all the, all the property owners that were here tonight. Any other property?
Thank you for being here.
No, and, and I would just ask Mr. Brindley if he's got a copy of those questions that he, he was reading. I started taking notes, and he was a little faster than I could type, so if you maybe send that or hand that to me, we can make a copy of that. We had a lot of the similar questions as I heard them from the Blunks, and we were able to review those and responded to them in writing as well. Happy to do that. I think it's a great way to make sure that we're all on the same page. Happy to do that.
Yeah, personally, I appreciate everybody being here and talking about what, what they envisioned for the area, what they envisioned for their property. I can, I can promise, at least my experience with this council, this body has been, everybody's vision is important for their personal property and what they want to do. And, and if, if people want to run horses here for a long time, they, they can certainly do that. And, and people can do other things that they vision for their property. So it is a, a balance of making sure we're representing property owners. We consider that a hugely important right here in Spanish Fork and, and always will. So it's great questions, great discussion, and I think, I think I'd, I'd want similar things answered in, in writing for sure. Mr. Brindley, I appreciate you being concise there. Thank you. Any questions here? Any other discussion up here? Questions for staff?
I can just, so last time that this was here, I echoed a parent, similar to what Shane said this time, is I think that it's important that we study this further and in a public manner, right? That we have it in a public hearing so that people know what we're getting into. We're not just doing this and saying, I'll put it aside or not, go forward. But this doesn't approve it. I think that's an important part of tonight, is that this just moves it forward so that we can actually have answers to the questions that are there. And Terry, thank you for your email. I didn't get a chance to respond. I don't know who, which one of you is Terry. Thank you for the email. I did receive it, and I just didn't have time to respond because it was so close to the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments up here? If not, I'd entertain a motion on Item Eight C.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the resolution indicating intent to annex the GWC annexation with caveat that the, the questions that Mr. Brindley, correct? Asked, they be answered in writing prior to the next time we have this, to have this meeting. Is that okay, Vaughn? Is that an okay motion?
And change the date to today's date.
And change the date in the resolution to April fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. Roll call vote, Councilwoman Carden?
Yes.
And Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Okay. Item Eight C moves forward to get some answers to questions in public, public hearing and set a date for those public hearings. So watch for that. Everybody in the area will be able to get some, some notice of when those meetings are coming up. And it goes to Planning Commission as well? Vaughn, did you mention that? This, this will go to Planning Commission before coming to us? Okay.
So it'll be two public hearings?
Kim, before you, maybe you're going right where I was telling you. Make sure you have their contact information.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, also the kids that you talked about in the first are still here and are still- She's like, I'm out.
We can steal her candy. We can steal her candy.
We only had one, you only put one to sleep.
Nate the Great.
Sleep too.
Empty, man. Just messing.
Take some for, take some for your sister.
Where'd you get that buckle? You won it? A rodeo?
Tanner, thank you.
Doing what?
Um, barrels.
Do you race barrels?
That's awesome.
Do you know, do you know the, do you know the Bextrom girl that races barrels? What's her name? She's coming here.
Morgan.
Morgan Bextrom?
She's really good. She's, she's got a fast horse. I'll bet you do too, huh?
Thank you. Yep, we'll talk to you soon. Thanks.
Thanks, you guys.
No one wants to stick around and talk about GMPs?
Chad's needing something for, that you have, Mayor? I've been here a long time. I got you some peanut ones there. And a York Peppermint Patty.
I don't want to eat this.
You guys need a five-minute break? Councilwoman Beck took a five-minute break. Do you need a minute break?
Apparently.
Are we good to go?
I'm good.
Good, all right. Okay, we're gonna power through. Okay, it takes us to Item Eight D.
This is really gonna be a conversation for me and Jared, right?
Yeah. I'm bringing my computer.
Item Eight D is Geneva Rock CMGC guaranteed maximum price for a thousand north, five hundred east, US Highway Six widening project.
So if you remember last meeting, we approved a GMP. We actually changed the GMP to include the signal to expressway lane. This is part of a project that's a much bigger project. It's, it's the UDOT project that's gonna widen US Six, a lane in each way, dual lefts on to Canyon Creek Parkway and then expressway lane. What we're trying to do is get ahead of them and get our roads improved before that road's improved. And then that way, our, our corridor will function the way it needs to function with the widening of US Six. So this project dates back almost a year, and when we put the actual original project out, which was expressway lane, we got zero bids. None. I mean, this was bidding, nobody would bid the job. We had too much time constraint on it. And so we went to Kenny Seng, who'd done the other side of the road, and we worked with them to do a CMGC. And that's that project. Through that process, we put it out to a selection committee to select the same, to do a CMGC on this part of the road. And we selected Geneva Rock. Kenny Seng was selected for the other project. And then Kenny Seng was also selected for Fourth North and Six Thirty West. And so what we've got here tonight is a guaranteed maximum price from Geneva Rock that we've worked through for the last six months with the design of this, with UDOT, and with our engineers. And so this design actually takes the main what happens to the six hundred east, the biggest change to this intersection is we're actually removing the left turn movement that turns down to a thousand north. And so when you come down Six East, you only have one option, and that is to go through Canyon Creek or to get on US Six. But what that does, it allows us to add a lane, which will have two left turn movements on to US Six to I fifteen. We'll have two through movements through Canyon Creek, and we'll have one dedicated right movement up to US Six. And so we're working with the church right now. We've been working with them since November two about acquiring this property. We got word today that they're gonna have us hopefully occupancy within the next two weeks. But what we're asking tonight is to approve the guaranteed maximum price with Geneva Rock of seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, some change, to get this under construction.
When does that begin?
It'll begin probably within a month. If we can get the right-of-way access, we'll start it soon. But if, if the church holds us up, we might hold off. So I want to say by the end of April, we'll have this running, so open running. We want to have it done this year, and we want to be ahead of US Six.
This light goes away, then no more turn from here to here?
No more turn. We have to adjust this light. There is, there will still be a light for the movement here, but there will be no left turn.
I'm no engineer. I know that's shocking. But why not extend that lane all the way out?
It's a safety concern because we want to, we don't want people just turning on. And so it chokes things down and then lets, lets things out. So we don't want people crossing over this intersection here.
But we would own this if we ever did decide to widen it at that point?
We're only acquiring what we need.
Oh, okay. So we aren't acquiring that?
Well, no, we're acquiring this. But we could widen it. But with this being a turn lane, what we don't want is traffic to cross through the intersection to get into that lane.
Makes sense to me.
We want to go through the intersection, then get over.
Right.
I'm glad you prefaced that, though. I feel much better.
That I'm not an engineer? Now, let's hear your engineer questions.
No, I don't, I don't, I, well, maybe I do. What was your engineer's estimate?
It's the same. So what this is, is this is working through them with our engineer's estimate. So this is a GMP, so this is the guaranteed maximum price. We still take these items to bid. They bid it out for our pre-keeping policy. So what they've said is, we've gone through this with our engineers, their engineers. We still take each line item through-
They're gonna bid it after this?
They have to.
Okay.
There are CMGCs. It's much like the building here. So when we do a CMGC on a building, they give us a guaranteed maximum price, but they, as they build the building, they bid out the sheet rock, they get everything. They do everything through that process.
Okay.
And then we select the lower, we select the best lowest bidder.
All right, so there's a still competitive process to come on each individual items. They're gonna self-perform some of this, which we will have a conversation about what that low bid is.
They still have to bid out anything they self-perform.
Okay.
Help me understand some. Can you ever exceed a GMP?
Well, there's a contingency in it. So if it does exceed, say the bids could have been higher, you're approving a sixty-three thousand dollar contingency, which they work with me. And if it looks reasonable, if line item, if the asphalt, for instance, comes in and the oil goes up in price, we have some-
A little flexibility.
Flexibility there to increase the price. But we cannot go over this price unless we come back to you. So what I'm asking is, is we will not go over the seven twenty-four, no matter what, unless we come back to the city council. The other process is still a competitive process. It's just that we feel like we're gonna be under that. And so we, we've worked with our engineers and their estimators to get this estimate.
Okay. The incentive completion, they have to earn that. That's not a guarantee for them.
Correct. They have to be done by a certain date, and I apologize, I don't know that certain date. But if they don't get, meet that date, they don't get it. There's no, there's, that completion date's a set date. Weather, it doesn't change.
Okay.
The weather, anything like that. Nothing changes that day.
All right. Realistically, you're, you're talking, if we can start in April, May, we're, we're done in twenty-three with this project.
We're done in months. We want to get this done ASAP because we want to be ahead of UDOT. And UDOT is still trying to get that constructed this summer. And so they'll be working on, they'll be starting this project this summer. So we're trying to get this, we're ready to go on this.
Highways, they'll, they'll be starting Highway Six this summer?
That's a UDOT project.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're trying to get all our projects done before UDOT. So we have our projects open and our roads complete. So expressway lane, the signals are up. If you've been out there, they're actually installing the expressway lane, Marketplace Drive, they're doing the underground. We haven't got the still. And that's what we're waiting for, is just the actual, the traffic signals themselves. But working with Tyler, Tyler is committed to have that project done end of May. July is kind of the end date. Everything's supposed to be done before Fiesta Days. So this one's the same. It's Geneva Rock, but they're committed to have it done.
I'm not an engineer either, but will residents, surprised, residents notice a difference on this road?
They'll know a big difference. The select few people that use this to turn left, that movement is very, very minimal, so they'll-
Yeah, the left, I don't care about it. I mean, I mean-
But everybody's gonna notice this. Yes, everybody will notice that. Everybody will be happy. Same with Eighth East and Eighth North. Once we get, well, I'll be back to you next month for another if you change order on that. It's on the other side of the road. But we're still working through that guaranteed maximum price with Kenny Seng and our estimators now.
This, this really cleans up this intersection. Yeah, it does not, it does not help this left turn at all, I mean. But it cleans up this whole flow. Two through lanes is a big deal, two left turns, this is a-
This is gonna be huge.
I am an engineer, and I think people will notice.
Well, and my words that I used last week about stuff like this was, it was a big deal. Yeah, yeah. See, Jesse remembers. That's my engineering.
It's a big deal?
Yeah, this one's a big deal.
It's, it's a pretty big deal. It is also, what, the sixth time that we've done work in this intersection? Just massive growth in this whole area, or US Six along with it, so.
Absolutely. They're going to increase this to two dual lefts off of... One of the biggest changes is the two dual lefts off of US 6 on Canyon Creek. And so we're going to, we're changing the other side of the road too. But that's part of the UDOT product or project, and we just did a better agreement with them.
Okay, and I'm also assuming there's going to be major signage coming on that road so they know.
There'll be signs in this...
They might not be watching this meeting. It may be surprising.
You should do a...
I know.
Spanish Fork Facebook Live.
Studio chat.
Yeah, this is going to be a studio chat.
I'm just, I'm just asking, can we have good signage?
Yeah. Well, we'll definitely put up the boards that the showpiece is going to close down and the construction will start. As far as the, the arrows you see on the road, they'll be painted on the road, and there will be signage. I don't know how you do much more...
I'm just thinking south of the church, so you're not all the way down there. And then people are like, oh, no.
For sure. It'll say right turn.
Have to go right and go through Highway 6 and go clear into Canyon Creek to Flippy Uy.
Correct. Have the proper signs right.
You know how many times you do that?
Are you going to need to close it at all, like entirely shut it down?
We won't allow this one to be closed. It'll be some traffic control.
But not closed.
But there won't be a hard closure.
It will get worse before it gets better, but it'll be better once it's finished.
Noticing something with Jared.
While this is going on. So you're going to notice it.
Okay.
Noticing that Jared doesn't come with little dills. He always comes with big dills.
He's a big dill.
Thanks, Jared.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you, Jared. Okay, if there's no other questions for Jared or staff on this, I would entertain a motion on 8D.
Motion to approve Geneva Rock CMGC guaranteed maximum price for the 1,000 North 500 East to US 6 widening project.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Marshall. Roll call vote, Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item 8D is approved. Takes us to 8E RMB Building Services, Library Hall Janitorial Services. Yes, Mr. Bill Bushman. You going to give us a plug for Arbor Day coming up, too?
We should.
You should.
Thank you for having me here tonight.
Oh, you're welcome.
I have more respect for you people than ever before.
I like how you said "you people."
I've learned a lot, so it's good to be here. Yeah, Arbor Day is coming up on the 28th of April. It'll be at Parkside Estates Park. Canyon Elementary School will be in attendance, and they'll have some skits and some songs and some activities that way. There's the address for Parkside Estates Park. We'd like to invite everyone in the city. Bring a shovel. We're going to plant eight trees, and we're working along with the Parks Division on that.
Is it snowing that day? Do you think you'll still be doing that? Just kidding.
We're going to pray there's no snow. But that's happened before. Not, maybe not snow, but rain so bad that the kids can't come out. So we'll go do the program at the school, and then we'll plant the trees ourselves. We've had to do that before. So the 24 years we've been doing this, having Arbor Day, Canyon Elementary has never had an opportunity to... We invited them years ago, and it just didn't work out. There's some miscommunication. I'm talking like 15 or 16 years ago. So they're thrilled. Principal Perry, Julie Perry, is excited about it. And I think the whole group is, so that'll be good. We should have four or five second grade classes out that night, or that afternoon. Excuse me, morning. It's like 10:00 in the morning. What time is it?
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. Yeah, so that's good.
Well, sorry, we threw you a curveball. That's not even what you were up here for.
Well, we're talking about it, though. Is Spanish Fork still part of Tree City?
Yeah, this will be our 24th year as Tree City USA. We just got approved. I got the new flag just last week. So we'll talk about that in Arbor Day as well. So it's been a good, it's been a good run.
Nice.
Yeah, it's been great. Thank you. Okay, we're here to talk about the RBM Building Services contract for the new library hall. We're living in a crazy age. You go out, put it on an RFP years ago, and you get 10 or so janitorial companies come to the mandatory walk-through. We had four that came through, two provided proposals, and were blown away by the cost of this thing. We took a look at the 60,000 square foot at the JC, the Justice Center. We thought, well, this is 40,000 square foot. Maybe it's going to be about 2/3 of the cost of the JC. And it came out to be double of what we thought it was going to be. But the second quote we got was $27,000 more than that. So Scott Alet and I sat down, we evaluated the quotes. But what it came down to is, one, we've got a lot of experience with RBM. Right now, they have six contracts with the city. They've had more in the past. They're really flexible, easy to work with. This is a one-year agreement. We'll see how things go. And I've got to talk about the building. We're excited about the building, but we're a little nervous. This has more panel glass in it than any building we've ever had. Probably more panel glass than any building in the state. I don't know. But that is expensive to keep that clean. Besides the fact that the occupancy of this building every single day is, I don't know, 400, 500, 600 kids are going to come through this building every day. But we're excited about it. But it's a learning curve we're going through on this one. So I'm here to just ask for your recommendation and approval on the quote given by RBM Janitorial Services for a one-year contract at $81,243.48. This represents 55 hours of work throughout the week by a staff that'll come after hours. Represents another 16 hours a week by a day porter. That's an individual that's there for three hours during the day, clean up messes that might happen throughout the day, keep the restrooms fresh, clean up anything you might see that comes from little children during the day. So that would be the purpose of the day porter. I think it's essential with this one.
Do we have any other facilities that have a day porter?
Yeah, we do. Justice Center does. There's a day porter there for the police station and for the Justice Center. And they're there from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM every day. And they just keep the restrooms refreshed. There's some of the things that they need to do while they're there that they can't get into offices, like Chief Johnson's office. They can't access that at night, so the night crew can't even get in there. So if the room's open, they can get in there for vacuuming and emptying, trash dusting, things like that. So that's what the day porter does there. So this will be the second building we have that I'm recommending a day porter. Any other questions?
Anything for Bill?
Nope.
Okay. If there's no other questions for Bill, I would entertain a motion for item 8E.
Motion to approve RMB Building Services for our library hall janitorial.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Euler. A roll call vote, Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
That's approved. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Lots of glass in that building.
For sure.
So is it cheaper to clean the glass or give out latex gloves to every kid that comes in?
Yeah, that's, yeah. Maybe that's safe.
Kid, you know every adult's going to run their fingers right across that glass.
Okay, it takes us to item 8F. This is a resolution approving mass notification interlocal cooperation agreement with Utah County through Everbridge. I think this is Tyler Jacobson. Is he out in the...
I got him.
Nick Porter? Was it you anyway?
Steph in. No, I can just, sorry that this wasn't on your consent agenda.
You can read this.
This should be. This is just a renewal of an agreement. So Everbridge is our emergency notification system. We also utilize it for a lot of other notifications through Parks and Rec to notify our employees of various things. It's a great tool. The contract is with the county. The cost is shared with 23 other cities, and our portion is just over $7,600 annually.
Did we utilize this last Wednesday?
We did not. We, the school district sent out their notifications through their software. They use a different software. We sent out a couple of things via social media. Had there been, had there been an active shooter, I could have seen us using this to do a shelter-in-place or something like that. Grateful that there wasn't, so we didn't see that there was a need for this.
Can you give us an example or two of when we have used this in the last year?
We use this every year at the Great Shakeout. Parks and Rec uses this when they have rainouts. So that's the text email you got if your kid played soccer last week.
We've used it on missing kids.
Missing kids, he said? Okay.
We use it on water main breaks.
All right, our viewers probably cannot care about it.
It was used also with the incident on the east end of town, right? To tell neighbors to stay inside, right? My uncle got a notification from that, so it has been used.
It's used every day. It's used for, if you're on auto pay with the city, you'll get a message from the utility office that that payment will come out just for late notices on bills. We use it every day.
We just pay a flat fee for as many times as we use it. It's not per year.
Correct. It's calculated by population.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Thank you. Did such a good job for just Johnny on the spot.
Covering for Tyler, you know. Good job.
Tyler didn't even know it was his thing.
Tyler wasn't prepared either.
There wasn't plan.
We're throwing you under the bus, anyway.
Tyler, we can tell by your facial expressions that this was not your item. You look super confused.
We officially have this on your consent agenda since it's a renewal.
Your poker face is amazing, Tyler.
Well, I'll go ahead and move to approve the mass notification interlocal cooperation agreement with Utah County.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Argyle. Roll call vote here, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yeah.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item 8F is approved. Takes us to item G. Utility write-offs for fiscal year 2023.
So each year we do this, and we write off uncollectible utility accounts. So there's 88 of them. And the majority of these terminated in calendar year 2019. We have some staff that will work to try and collect those for a few months. And if they're making progress, we'll set up payment plans and we'll work those that way. If they're not making progress, then we send them to a collection company and they work on them. And even after we write these off, the collection company will still continue to try and collect.
So the person is not the hook by writing these off, but we're just, we're moving on and letting the collection company do their thing?
Yeah, it's more of an accounting thing.
And let it go sometime.
We're not claiming it as revenue anymore.
It's a loss at this point.
Yeah, you're writing off your, it's no longer receivable on your books. Yeah, so you can see that there's some bankruptcies and some deceased accounts there, and that's fairly common. And then, yeah, some small balance accounts. There was one business that accounted for a decent chunk of this. I want to think 20,000 plus that burned us.
Should we publicly shame them?
I don't think they're in business anymore, which may be why we didn't. So I don't know that it'd do any good. I did find some interesting news articles about that business. So this is the number we're writing off right here. So you can already see where we're going to be for the next three years, and that's assuming we don't collect another dollar. So those three numbers should go down as we continue to work those. So these high numbers, yeah. That'd be partly a result of the Great Recession and people falling on hard times. So we're billing about $50 million a year. So this number is very small in relation to how much we're billing.
Didn't you one year turn this over to a collection agency?
Yeah, so we've had a few different collection agencies over the past 10 years. Right now, we're with Sherrington Firm. And I think they're doing pretty good work.
Are we going to do that with this?
So this, they've already worked these accounts. Yeah, so these are accounts that have already been worked by our staff and by the collection agency and still haven't been able to get paid. Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah, nobody wins when somebody can't pay their utility bill. The city doesn't win, residents, nobody, the customer doesn't win. So our goal is to collect 100% on time, and we try to help people with that. But any questions on this?
You just throwing us a curveball with these dates down here?
So those are, yeah, those are future years projected. Yeah.
He's an engineer. He can't look that way.
The other way. Went the other way.
Oh, you're saying reading right to left? Yeah, sometimes when you take something from Google to Excel, like...
Okay.
Yeah.
I took me, like, is that a year? Is that 2020? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm slow. I'm just an engineer, not an accountant.
I'd zoom out a little bit.
Yeah, zoom out.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Jordan. Any other questions for Jordan on this? If not, I'd entertain a motion on item 8G.
I move to approve a fiscal year 2023 utility write-offs.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilman Argyle. Roll call vote here, Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Item 8G is approved. Item 8H... Yes, I need a motion to withdraw the item because it is no longer necessary.
Motion to remove item H under the new business.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Cardon to remove item 8H as it's no longer necessary. Roll call vote, Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
And Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Item 8H is removed.
Mayor, I move that we recess for five minutes or so.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and come back in here to discuss our last item, 9A, the inland port. We'll be back.
Are we going to discuss that?
Welcome back, Seth.
Okay, we're good to go, we're back from recess. Uh, thank you.
Thanks for that. We, we went out and played a game of kickball. I wanna report that I won.
Jagger, Jagger's gonna be confused that we have recess at council meetings.
We played King of the Monkeys and Shane fell, and I won. Yes, he did.
You lost.
I have witnesses, he put on his bunny ear hat and he fell.
Seth is talking to us about item 9A, the inland port.
Inland port. Um, we had a good conversation two weeks ago in council meeting and uh, I was going to have a couple of things ready for us to conceptually talk about in today's meeting and.
It's like there's a but coming.
However. Circumstances as they have been, uh, I haven't been able to get those things prepared. But, so we had a conversation, dang it, however.
But?
However, nevertheless, uh, we did have a conversation with these four about inland port and I would, since we've got a moment, maybe invite uh, Councilman Marshall and, and Euler to share any thoughts, any concerns and, and things that we, as we had our meetings with the inland port. And I'm happy to back up at all, um, review some of the feedback that we got from these guys or, what I wanted to review was the resolution language and um, the resolution language is actually really simple. Yeah, I don't wanna mischaracterize it, so keep me in lines here, Vaughn. Um, we, we were wondering maybe if it would be a, a little bit more complex of a resolution, but frankly, it's a lot like the resolution that we just passed for the annexation study that just simply says, "We want to study this with the inland port." Uh, there is no commitment, uh, to that resolution, and so it's a, it's just signaling the intent and giving us that legal ground, if you will, to move forward, studying and preparing documents with the inland port for a future. I think we do a public hearing here and they do two public hearings, is the process. Um, for your sakes, it, it is my recommendation, uh, that we move forward with the inland port and study that specifically with them and, and that we have that resolution on the council meeting, uh, in, the first council meeting in May. So whatever the date that is, but the first council meeting in May is when we'd have that, um, on the agenda. And then, the, the inland port timetable says that we could probably have it created maybe as early as June, but certainly by July. Um, and there is no real rush but for, um, our desire maybe to use some of the tools. If we wanna get those tools in place faster, then we could speed up that timetable, whatever we want to, uh, with the, with the inland port.
Seth, can you give me a favorite topic on this study? What, what are you studying?
Inland port authority.
Creation of inland port. A creation.
Yeah. I can't do it in three words, but I can do it in six. I mean, that's, the three words is what's stupid.
You were adding them up and is that?
I was.
No.
Creation of the inland port. Study of the creation of the inland port. How's that? That's what you said. Yeah, that's what Vaughn said. What Vaughn said. Yeah. So, I can share any of the thoughts that I have or, and what I shared with these guys, but really, uh, I, I would love to get some feedback from you in terms of what you heard, what your concerns were. Councilman Marshall, you had some experiences in, in previous lives and interactions with the inland port. My guess is that what you heard in the meetings that we had was probably different than what you had experienced in a previous day.
I think the, the concerns I would have is just over transparency and making sure that as we move this forward, and I like the resolution that sort of signifies we're gonna start something, everyone knows we're starting something, be completely above board about what that means, what it doesn't mean, and that's my biggest concern is to make sure we share that with the public as we move forward.
Gotcha.
And it sounds like they're, the current administration is, and I don't know if the previous administration was on board with that, I don't know, but we're headed that direction.
Yeah.
From what they were describing in the meeting, it sounds like they're very different.
They prefer that.
They, yeah. As, as compared to what they've tried to do in the past, their, their approach is very different from what it used to be.
Yeah. I think that's a fair statement.
It's more of a, in the past, it was go, now, today it's, we have a process. Let's collaborate, let's be slow about it, make the right decisions. And I think, I like signifying to everyone, we're looking at something, come on down and talk to us about it.
So the resolution is easy, so those contractual agreements, that's where we would get into the real meats and potatoes of what we're holding onto and so on and so forth?
Yep. And at a minimum, uh, we would recommend as staff that our arrangement with them mirror as much as we can, uh, what we had proposed to do with our CRA. Um, they made some significant adjustments to their law and statute based on some recommendations and, and issues that we had raised with them in our meetings, that will make it function better, uh, than it would have and more like our CRA would have as well. So, as much as we can make our contract with them align with our values and, and issues, excuse me, that we wanted with the CRA, then I think we're really getting to a place where we can benefit from, as a community, the tools that they give us, that the inland port has, but we protect, uh, I think what we have decided is important to us, like our relationships with the county, with the school district, and the percentages that we've identified and things like that. One of the biggest concerns I had going in was losing control, right? That's something that I've talked to some of you individually and, and maybe I expressed in the last meeting, and, and they have signaled to us their, their comfort with giving back control by contract and binding themselves to abide by that contract. Um, most importantly, I think for me, is that the timeline require city participation to re-up the port. Um, and, and that is a, that requires two yeses, uh, so their yes and our yes. And I like that, because then, in, in year 25, I don't want this to just go for another 15 years if we're done. Uh, and so they, they would give us that, that vote of, without our yes, it would end. We want it to be, I think, 20 years, right? That was our conversation with the school district, and they've given us the tool, they've given us their, their, um, uh, comments that they, they can't do shorter than 25 years, but what we do with that increment, they will give to us. So if we wanna take that increment and give it back to the taxing entities as if it didn't flow away from them in years 21 through 25, then they can do that. And that's great, right? That in effect makes it a 20-year deal instead of a 25-year deal. So they've, they've, they've been able to, uh, methodically work through, I think I would say all of the concerns that we've had in terms of how our CRA were, would have worked and how their, their port tool would have worked. The biggest reason why I want to explore this and I'm interested in it is the financing tools that it opens up for us and removing some of that from our back and putting it on to different backs, not even their back. It just puts it, it just gives us a couple of different tools that, that are really, uh, for what we're looking to do this for, very, um, very useful in protecting of, of us as, I think, a community. So that's really good. I like that a lot. Okay, so signaling comfort from us, we'll, we'll get that to the next resolution.
Right, just thinking back as to what was so controversial last time, it was, it was the thought that it was gonna, a particular place was gonna develop like this and the port comes in and completely changes.
Right.
We're not talking about doing that at all. We're talking about how do we, we have a vision out there.
Yep.
What's the best way to implement that vision? And are, are there other tools in the toolbox to help us? I mean, just as long as we can be open and honest about why we wanna do it, what it does for us, what it doesn't do it, so.
Yeah, and I think they'll always say they want rail associated with the project, and we have the ability to put rail in this area if we want it. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit leery of, of, you know, adding rail lines here and there for projects that, you know, that we've been working on in the past, so I'm not all that excited about, uh, adding rail lines, but they've said all along, if you wanna do rail, we would love to have rail be a part of this project. Uh, but if you don't, that's okay.
At the same time, couldn't that possibly help in the future where if the Pacific says you've gotta close so many to be able to open one, if we're opening some through this area, does that give us the ability possibly to close them another place?
It's possible. I.
Some peaches.
You're causing me to hyperfenolate, so I don't know.
He said you pee and you just.
No, it, it really is tricky. What they bring to the, what they bring to the table on, on rail though, is some different relationships and some different expertise. So if that's something we wanted to do, I'm guessing that they, they could perhaps make that better for the community. I, I don't know that they will, but they perhaps can. You know, we, we don't have that connection or we don't have those connections like, like they might, so. If that's something we wanna do, that's something that they can do. But they also then very quickly said, "But what's your vision and what's your plans for the area?" So, we don't lose land use authority and we, which is important too.
That's the key component of it. We're, we're accessing larger, larger, larger tools than we have ourselves and not giving up what historically could or would have happened with an inland port, not giving up that land use authority, not giving up our autonomy for it, so.
What I, what I liked was they expressed or talked about, because they've got their fingers in so many other locations, they could have somebody talking to them in southern Utah, maybe for example, that they could say, "Hey, you know, this doesn't make sense in this area, but we've got this place up in Spanish Fork that would make sense." So it gives more flexibility and opportunity for different things to, to come to town.
Yeah, I, I think it does enhance your economic development arm, right? In terms of what you just described, so that, that's a positive. Okay, thank you. We'll proceed then with, uh, that, that resolution on your May, first meeting in May agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Okay, if there's no other item that needs to come before this body, and we have no closed session tonight, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn city council meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall. All in favor to adjourn, say yes.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thanks for coming.
So Seth?